Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the regularization meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, May 25, 2021, at 6:30 PM. We received a memorandum from Commissioner Terrapini stating that he could not be here tonight to attend the BOC meeting, and he's asking to be excused. I need a motion.
Motion to excuse.
Second.
Roque, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Merrill Huzis?
Yes. Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Smith, the Chaplain of Tarpon Police and Fire, following by the Pledge of Allegion.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you with a heart full of gratitude. We thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for this beautiful city. We are grateful for our city leaders, the mayor, and commissioners. We pray your blessings upon them as they lead. Please grant them with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. We pray for our first responders. Grant safety as they perform their duties. We pray for the city staff, and we pray for the residents and visitors to this great city. And we pray that you have blessed this meeting here tonight, all that are present. In your precious name, we ask it all. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be advised that item number 13 has been deferred to June 8th regularization. I would like to remind to everyone that in order to have a productive meeting with professionalism and based on the city code, all public comments must be directed only to the Chair of the meeting in a professional manner with respect without a personal tax, and I want to thank you for your cooperation. We now go into the public comments or the items that will not be discussed tonight. If you have any comments, please come forward, state your name and your address for the record. You'll be given four minutes.
Chris Roboski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. First, I'd like to express my condolences to the family of Andy Salavares. Definitely an icon of this city and a man that I personally admire. Used to go to his restaurant, and he would come over and talk to me about his thoughts and feelings about the city and the way things were going. I just thought it was important to let you know that his main concern was about communication. He expressed to me that he was concerned that the commission no longer would come down to the Sponge Docks and talk to the owners of the restaurants and the stores and listen to what they had to say. I'm sure you know that, because I'm sure he's told you that. But he told me that many times, and I've told you many times about stepping up your communication with your citizens and allowing them to communicate more easily. And it became abundantly aware, I became aware, the fact that in the last meeting, just as I was leaving, it was discussed that the COVID order was going to be relaxed, and therefore, there may no longer be Zoom phone calls in or even emails read. Well, you need to get that on the agenda and fix that, but before that, you can tonight, if anybody has written an email, you, as Chair, as the mayor, can allow any emails that have been written to be read into the record. And if you want to go with consensus of the board, you can do that, and then you can find out how many commissioners would also like their citizens to be heard. But there's nothing barring you from reading letters or emails from the public. Beverly Billerus, as mayor, used to do that, as you used to sit next to her as vice mayor. She personally read them. She didn't ask the clerk to do it. So there is a long history and precedent of doing that. It would be nice to re-implement the Zoom so people at home can call in during the meetings. There's no need to stop doing that. That was working quite well, and it allows more people participation in their government. So let's not limit speech in our town anymore. Let's expand it, and if nothing else, just allow it. Allow people to utilize their First Amendment here. And those that can't make it to the meetings, and the only way they can get their thoughts known to you is through email or letter, please read them into the record so that we can all hear that. Like in January, when literally hundreds of people, three and a half hours' worth of pre-recorded emails were read into the record, and then some commissioners decided they didn't want those to be heard by the public. We can't have that. At least, I know there were two people here tonight that did vote to allow those people to be heard. So hopefully, you allow the rest of the public to be heard tonight, if there were any emails. And I know that there was a woman who's been badly injured that was going to be here tonight, and she couldn't make it, so she told me personally she was going to write some emails. So I hope that you read those into the record. She was not able to attend. So I'll be listening for those and others, and now I see there is a sign-in sheet here. So I will do that. As I have not seen this since 2004. But I'm glad to see you finally have what you said you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I wanted to donate my time for the cause, for the ant clothes. I don't know where he was. Where? I'm going to donate my time to this gentleman.
Who is this gentleman?
Yeah, that, please.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jeff Caputo, St. Petersburg, Florida, 4604 49th Street North, number 140, concerned citizen. This is in regards to the Code 5605-5606 concerning the food trucks. The record that I watched of the September 2020 Tarpon Springs Commission meetings reflect that officials publicly admitted that unfair market competition exists when venues invite third-party food truck vendors onto their property because such practice circumvents the investments made by the brick-and-mortar food establishments, those privately-owned establishments. So these following inquiries bar any food truck exceptions such as special events or festivals and are concerning the 5605-5606 legislation in Tarpon Springs Code. I have my inquiries put out to be answered by the commission afterwards or in the near future or to my address or email. How can I go about handing these out to you guys? Hard copy. Can I hand it to?
Yeah, just.
The clerk?
The clerk is on the other side.
Okay. So my inquiries are, other than the hypothetical economic damages potentially incurred by privately-owned businesses, does the Tarpon Springs Commission have any documentation on record describing how the public or government can suffer injury, loss, or harm to their lives, liberties, or properties if said establishments invite licensed, insured, and sanitary third-party food truck vendors onto their premises for business, those temporary vendors you have in 5605? Does the Tarpon Springs Commission, next inquiry, number two, does the Tarpon Springs Commission have any documentation on record reflecting that there will be less damages to the public or government interests by prohibiting food and drink establishments from inviting third-party food truck vendors onto their premises for business? Third inquiry, does the Tarpon Springs Commission have any documentation on record reflecting that there will be more damages to the general public's or the government's interests by allowing food and drink establishments to invite third-party food truck vendors onto their premises for business? The fourth inquiry, does the Tarpon Springs Commission have any documentation reflecting a record of any compelling public or government interests which could be advanced by prohibiting food and drink establishments from inviting third-party food truck vendors onto their premises for business? The fifth inquiry, does the Tarpon Springs Commission have any documentation reflecting that the basis for enacting 5605 and 5606 was for any other reasons besides just protecting the economic interests of privately-owned businesses who voiced their concerns to the mayor and the commission? Should the Tarpon Springs Commission remain silent on any of these requests? It could reflect an admission that they have no such documentation reflecting that 5605 and 5606 were passed solely to protect the economic interests only of private parties with no foundation in how such legislation advances any compelling public interests or legitimate government interests. Okay, me, a non-lawyer, just from on the surface, I look at Florida statutes 509.102, section 2. It states, "A municipality, county, or local government entity may not prohibit mobile food dispensing vehicles from operating within the entirety of the entity's jurisdictions." But Tarpon Springs Code 5605 restricts temporary food trucks to, quote, "zoned HB highway business, CPD commercial plan development," which is non-residential property only, IR, that's industrial restricted, and IH, industrial heavy. So to me, that's restricting it. The Florida code says entities jurisdiction. I'd like to hear a clarification from that on how that squares. So how is it that Florida statutes prohibits Tarpon Springs municipalities from preventing the operating within the entirety of the municipality yet legislates the restriction of only certain zones? I'd like a clarification of how this legislation of restricting 5605 temporary food trucks to certain areas to the exclusion of others squares with the term, quote, "entirety of the jurisdiction" in Florida statutes 509.102.2. Thank you for your time. I'll sign in.
David Happy, 850 East Lime Street in Tarpon Springs. I'm a Tarpon Springs resident and business owner. I own a little business in downtown Tarpon called Cigar City Humidor's. And in difference to Jeff here, I think you guys are doing a great job. In fact, I called the city yesterday because I'm trying to figure out how I would get involved in the business protection plan, the business protection program that you all offer. I've spent a lot of money building my cigar humidor business. I have some interest in my business down in the Sponge Docks area, and I'd like you to protect my business just in the same way that you're protecting these restaurants. I don't want you to allow any competitors to come in after I've spent my time and money building this business. So I looked for, I called the city. Mr. Mayor, I looked for a form. I couldn't find how I apply for this business protection program that I would love my business to be included in. So maybe after the meet, I was hoping Mr. Terrapini would be here. I don't know if he would just come, you know, if he just stops by to see me, if I make an appointment with him, stop by to see him. But I'd be interested in that program for my business. I'd assume you wouldn't discriminate against my business, because if it is a program where you offer business protection, I would love, man, that would be great for my business, great for my investment. I think it'd be good for the city because yet another business that gets protected by our commission from unfair competition. All these people want to come from outside and take my business, but you guys have the ability to protect me from competition, which is awesome. So if you can have someone follow up with me, I would be happy to, if you want to have Mr. Terrapini or somebody to stop by, I don't know how this works, but I tell you, I am totally receptive if you make me an offer that I cannot refuse. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good evening. Jonathan Riches, 128 Cooper Street, Tarpon Springs, 34688. I'm here representing Born Arrived 45. We love President Trump. I hope he runs again. So I attend a lot of meetings around the state, particularly school boards. What's very refreshing here is you guys don't have masks, so I'll give you guys kudos for that. Because I don't believe in masks, I believe they're unconstitutional. So it's great that you're not mandating masks in here. Back to Blue all the way. We love the law enforcement. I go up in Tarpon Springs on 19 all the time and wave American flags. I guess you guys seen us before, big group. You know, we're patriots. We love our community, we love our police, our first responders, our law enforcement, our firefighters, our military. I do think, though, I'm hearing a lot about the food truck, you know, the food truck, I guess called food truck scandal that's going on here. You know, I'm here in support of food truck vendors. I don't think it's right to discriminate against food trucks and telling them that they can't do business in certain spots in Tarpon Springs. You know, I feel by saying that they only can be up by 19 instead of Sponge Docks, that's sort of like segregation, it's discrimination. I think you guys should cease that activity, because as you know, the dorms are suing the city of Tarpon Springs, and, you know, as a Tarpon Springs taxpayer, we have to foot you guys' bill because you guys are discriminating against, you know, food trucks. And if more and more people sue you people, then the taxpayers, we, the people, the taxpayers, have to foot that bill. You guys don't have to foot the bill personally because it's not in your individual capacities, it's your official capacity. So the taxpayers foot the bill. You know, a lot of people, you know, a lot of buzz over social medias. People are mad, residents are mad, you know, vendors are mad that they can't do business throughout Tarpon Springs. They should be able to be at the Sponge Docks, you know, as me, as an individual. You know, I like variety of choices of food, you know. I just don't want Greek food or, you know, because, you know, this Greek food's good, but sometimes I want a hamburger and fries and a milkshake, you know, and these food trucks that are, you know, regulated and they have their inspection and whatnot, you know, provide that, you know, it'd be good for the community, revenue driving, you know. You don't want to be sued. You don't want people to hate you guys, you know, because, you know, a lot of these vendors are getting mad. There's like, oh, there's a lot of corruption going on in Tarpon Springs. I don't know that, but I know if people are claiming that, they're going to file reports with the FBI and everything, and then they're going to have you guys under investigation. And, you know, people informant and wiretapping and stuff like that, and there's going to be scandals that, you know, proceed after that, whatever, you know, practices that people are doing. I mean, you're smiling, but you don't want to go to federal prison. I've been in federal prison. Let me tell you something, I've been in federal prison. You don't want to go to federal prison, for real, mayor, because it's a bad place, you know, and you see a lot of mayors around the country that do corruption, they go to federal prison. They do time in federal prison. You know, I'm Caucasian, I had a very difficult time in federal prison, and a lot of people do. So I'm just saying, I hope you guys are on your Ps and Qs. God bless this country, you know, protect the food vendors, you know. Other than that, you know, everything's cool, you know, I like Tarpon Springs. One of the things I enjoy doing is hanging out at Walmart on 19, you know, where out in front of Walmart, and when police arrest the shoplifters, you know, they bring them out in handcuffs and stuff like the perp walk, and I like to make videos and kind of like, you know, you know, enjoy that moment, saying, "Do not shoplift," you know, say no to shoplifting, say no to all crime. Do I make any sense? Have a great day, guys. Take care.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Vertically challenged. Mike Eisner, 1515 Riverside Drive, Tarpon Springs, Florida. Mayor, city commissioners, council. I want to start by thanking Commissioner Vaticiotis and you, mayor. You came up to me at the Little League the other day, and you congratulated me for my, putting my hat in the ring for the city commissioner candidate. And I just wanted to also say that I was especially moved by you, Commissioner Donovan. You came up to me, and we've had words in the past, and you wholeheartedly gave me your support as far as saying that I don't just walk the walk or talk the talk. I'm in it. So I really want to thank you. You really meant a lot to me when you commended me for that, so I do appreciate that. Thank you. So here's a bit about my personal experience and my background. At 21, I was the youngest National Service Manager of Emerson Radio, and so I have an electronics and electrical background. For 10 years, I worked for Xerox Corporation in a very competitive New York City sales department that I succeeded and was rated ninth in the Northeast Region. Then I became the Branch Manager of an international pest control company and ran New York operations, New Jersey, and Westchester County. So these are some of the things that I've accomplished along my merry way. In 2014, I retired after being a first responder at Hurricane Irene and Hurricane Sandy that hit us in New York back-to-back. My wife Linda and I lost our home in Hurricane Sandy. It was a very emotional time for us. By trade, I'm a flood restorator, mold remediation specialist. For the last 30 years, I remodeled flooded kitchens, baths, and I'm a home improvement contractor. That is my background. I am also a flooring expert. As you see, I have a very diverse background. I'm always looking to help others with common sense solutions and accurate fixes. My mantra and truck license plate says, "Ask Mike," and I took that plate for a reason. Since moving to Florida, I've been very involved with Rotary since 19, sorry, since 2015. I was named Club Rotarian of the Year in Tarpon Springs, and in 2019, I was the District Rotarian of the Year. I was also awarded the Club and District Membership Chair. I've been the Rotary Youth Exchange Officer and led the kids, which I've devoted my life to helping kids with mentoring and taking them and showing them to be international ambassadors from 40 different countries. For the past six years, I've been appointed to the Board of Adjustments, and I serve on the Quasi-Tudicial Committee. We oversee the city staff to ensure that variances are done wisely. On May 5th of this year, I led a group to open and charter Tarpon Sunset Rotary Club with 36 members, which hasn't been done in 25 years in Rotary. Our goal will be to fight human trafficking and assist in Alzheimer research fundraising. Our motto is "Service Above Self." It's something I've done since I've come to Tarpon Springs. As our next, as the next city commissioner, we need to rebuild and work on a five-year plan. We need to grow our industries, help offset residential tax liability, and curb waste while keeping Tarpon Springs the best place in Florida to live. We need to keep our ecosystem working fine and alive without overburdening it, what we already enjoy. The city has a long list of unfinished products, project salary, that need my attention. I have no hidden agenda or financial interests. If I need more time, my wife Linda will donate my time. I have no hidden agenda or financial interests in town except to make it better. I have set up a Facebook and Instagram page called mike.eisner.comish. I look forward to hearing from my fellow Tarponites and to becoming a next city commissioner for C3. Thank you for listening to me, and I plan to listen to the people of Tarpon Springs with my ears open. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Bill Delakis, 1221 Georgia Highway 57, Gordon, Georgia, also via 49 West Center Street, Unit 111, Tarpon Springs. I was born and raised in Tarpon Springs 62 years ago. I've been out of this town for 22, 24 years. I moved away. I come back now, and all I see is commission that they say is all corrupt, the city's suing the commission, our tax dollars are going down the drain to pay for attorneys, you've got food truck issues. Let me tell you what, I went to Rusty Bellies the other night, I loved the place. Went there once with my wife. I had to wait 45 minutes just to get in there to eat. I went there another night with a friend, had to wait an hour and a half. I said, "The heck with that, I'm not going to wait an hour and a half to get some seafood." Started to drive off, and the person says, "Whoa, whoa, pull in there." I'm like, "What? I'm not going deep sea fishing." They said, "No, no, no, pull in there." I said, "What? It's a restaurant." I says, "No, it says half-day deep sea fishing." They says, "No, it's a restaurant." I says, "We go out there, sit down by the water, have a beautiful meal." Little girl comes out, 16-year-old girl working in the kitchen. Well, you know what the kitchen was? It was a food truck. Wow, a food truck down by the docks, but they can use it because it's stationary in part to a business. It's a little bit of discrimination. Yeah, you got your brick and mortars. You know what? I'm Greek too, and I love Andes. We used to eat in Mykonos all the time. I support the Greek restaurants when I come here too, but you know what? There's a lot of places have a lot of different things, little different ethnic food, little different culture. You got a little hole in a wall taco place down here. Man, I stopped there and ate some tacos. They were fantastic. tacos, they were fantastic. You gotta let a little bit something else in here. And another thing, everybody that's complaining about the commission and the mayor, I see you are running for mayor, congratulations. And you, congratulations, going for commission. You know what? Instead of arguing and fighting and complaining, why don't y'all run for office and take these seats and make a change? Do something constructive instead of complaining and fighting about it all the time. I'm sick of Tarpon Springs, and I just came back. I'm glad I'm selling my unit and I'm gone. Because from what I see here, it's not a city that I really want to stay in. If this is the way the commission is and the city is and the way you're being sued every time you turn around, come on. My tax dollars are going down the drain to pay for lawsuits, and I've paid plenty of attorneys in my life, and I can guarantee you, I don't like paying them. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other public comments? Are there any other public comments? Peter Delakis, five-one-four Ashland Avenue. I will refer you to Irene. The lady Linda earlier donated two of her minutes, she had to leave because she couldn't stay any longer. And Jean Pierre here is donating her minutes, so I have a total of eight. Thank you. What will be our readings tonight? Isaiah thirteen, nine through eleven. See, "The day of the Lord is coming, a cruel day with wrath and fierce anger, to make the land desolate and destroy the sinners within it. The stars of heaven and their constellations will not show their light, the rising sun will be darkened, and the moon will not give its light. I will punish the world for its evil, the wicked for their sins. I will put an end to the arrogance of the haughty, and will humble the pride of the ruthless. I will make man scarcer than pure gold, more gold than the gold of fear." Jeremiah fifty, thirty-one through thirty-three. "See, I am against you, O arrogant one. Declare the Lord, the Lord Almighty, for your day has come, the time for you to be punished. The arrogant one will stumble and fall, and no one will help her up. I will kindle a fire in her towns that will consume all who are around her." This is what the Lord Almighty says. I didn't put these people up to speak, but they took a couple minutes of my time, and I'm glad of it, because one of the things I wanted to talk about is how, like Chris says a lot of times, "What are you guys doing? You've got three major lawsuits on your hands because of your idiocy. Save the Eastlake, the Stamis Property Development, Pioneer Developments, us with Morgan Group, and now the Institute for Justice for the food trucks." And if, I didn't look through the attorney fees tonight, but for those who look in the agenda backup, the Johnson and Jackson, whatever, is the labor stuff, and there are a lot of little suits in there, just for background. I'm sure the attorney could verify that. Now, pull up the agenda, there's no Zoom, there's no phone call in. I did speak to Mark, and he clarified, referred me back to the last meeting, item fifteen. And on the last line there, it was saying we would go to pre-COVID protocols for meetings. So I went back, watched the section of the, of the tape. It was like, five minutes to eleven, Vice Mayor car, "Oh, we only got a couple minutes, we can do this real quick. Let's pass this resolution through real quick." Commissioner Vaticiotis brought up about emails, and Mark responded saying, "You could take action on it. You right then could have made a motion. We will accept the reversal of these local ordinances. However, we still want the public to have an opportunity to communicate with us. They're disabled people, homebound people, people that finally got a chance to see what was going on and participate. But you guys don't want to hear, you don't want to be past eleven o'clock. Excuse me, I gotta get him, go to work." Well, maybe you need to focus more on what you're doing here and not worry about the time. These people elected you to represent them, and they want to speak to you, and yet, this board, more than any ever board I've ever seen, doesn't want to hear from the public. Proverbs thirteen dash ten. Pride only breeds quarrels, but wisdom is found those who take advice. Number four. Page six ninety-six. Proverbs sixteen eighteen. Sixteen eighteen. Pride goes before destruction, and a haughty spirit before fall. Six, five, seven oh two. This is Proverbs twenty-one, twenty-four. "The proud and the arrogant man, 'Mocker' is his name; he behaves with overreigning pride." And the last one for now. Two eighty-six. Samuel two, three. "Do not keep talking so proudly, or let your mouth speak such arrogance; for the Lord is a God who knows, and by Him deeds are weighed." Deeds are weighed. So when you leave the board, how do you want your deeds to be weighed? Cutting out a thousand trees and claiming you're an arbor city? The mayor going to the West Klosterman Preserve fundraiser, yet voted against us trying to preserve seventy-four acres? The same board that spent almost two million dollars buying the Sunray, the Hoffman lease, the destruction of the Sunray, the purchase of the Hoffman property, two million bucks over that, I bet you at least two million bucks. That was your down payment for a Florida Communities Trust grant to buy that property. But, it's not, it hadn't stopped then. You guys gotta wake up and, and do the right thing, because you're not listening to the people, you're cutting them out. You gotta put the Zoom and the phone calls and the emails back in place, and you can do that tonight. Next person, please. Do we have any of the public comments?
Yes.
Please come to the podium.
Panayotis Kulyas, five-nine-five Peninsula Avenue. Anybody donating their time is simply just doing that, these are all my own thoughts and expressions, therefore I will have Maria Kulyas, Annie Samarcos, Mrs. Iowanu donate their minutes. We're verified?
Mr. Markus, do you agree with that? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, my fellow Tarponites. Tonight's focus will be centered on the political career of James Jim Kolianos and his desire for the easy way out and finding city managers. Mayor, I must remind you, the citizens, I re- I must remind the citizens, Jim Kolianos influenced you into politics from the time you both worked together at GTE. The reason Jim Kolianos is important to, to today and what's going on in City Hall is his and the good old boy's dream came true. They finally got their in-house, homegrown yes-man city manager, one of their own. Jim Kolianos did the same thing from nineteen seventy-six to nineteen eighty-one. Now, the reason there's an issue between Jim Kolianos and I is because he used good old boy threatening tactics to scare me at the November tenth, twenty-twenty BOC meeting, the night the mayor called me an idiot in Greek. Jim also made the following, uh, public statements that night. "I've never been afraid to stand up here and worry about retribution. The day you can't speak freely about how you feel about another commissioner, then I don't want to vote for you. That's not the way the United States is, and it should never be that way in Tarpon Springs." Well, I'm here to speak freely on Jim Kolianos and my own hometown of Tarpon Springs. The night he threatened me, I brought my Bible, the night he did threaten me, and I brought this Bible in my hand right now, and what I tell is the truth about that. If Mr. Jim Kolianos, I'm gonna leave it up here, if he wants to hold it up and deny the fact that he did threaten me, we'll leave it up to that decision. And I also had, you know, and anyone who knows Jim knows he's a bully. Here's the email I had to send to Chief Cochen on November eleventh, twenty-twenty, at two thirty-nine PM. "Hi, Chief, I want to put it on record that Jim Kolianos threatened to come after me every way he can while he was sitting towards the end of the meeting. He claimed I didn't have a business license in Tarpon Springs, as well as he's been watching me. I'm honestly not afraid at all, but I must report it. Thank you." On November thirteenth, twenty-twenty, Jeff Young, Chief Jeff Young now. "Panayotis, I received your email from Chief Cochen regarding the interaction between you and Mr. Kolianos. Chief Cochen and I agree that nothing criminal took place between the exchanges of words you had with each other, which caused me to intervene and advise both of you to cease the banter which was causing a disruption of the meeting. I will create a file saving this public, for public email." You know, I also spoke on the November seventeenth meeting, uh, twenty-twenty, which I had to bring it up because I was tired of it.
What happened at the last meeting? And the retribution. Apparently, one of your very good friends, Jim Kolianos, I saw you leaving with him. You hopped in his truck yesterday, after the meeting was over, is that correct? Believe so. Well, this man was, uh, you know, he's basically used as a political bully, uh, to try to scare people when people are trying to voice their concerns. He's a staunch supporter of the city manager, as well as the mayor, and he seems to be a, a really close campaign advisor to David Banther. Uh, we had some citizens that came up here that were afraid to speak the truth because of retaliation and retribution from La Course and crew, and that ended up being the case for them. I was actually threatened outside by Mr. Jim Kolianos with, along the lines of, "We're watching you, and you don't have a business license in Tarpon Springs." Bogus allegations. It's the God's honest truth, Mayor. So, I sit there and ask, "Is this what you guys do? Is this just another version of, you know, the Russian Bolsheviks or Nazi ground shirts coming to intimidate people because we speak the truth?"
Now, a henchman in Merriam's dictionary is defined as "a faithful follower, a right-hand man, or political supporter, especially one prepared to engage in crime or dishonest practices by way of service." It's also defined as "a political follower whose support is chiefly for personal gain." Now, that personal gain can be anything from a surplus in seating material such as lumber from construction projects and equipment, which the city manager gives to the follower for free without the watchful eye of an internal auditor, or a personal advantage can also be the form of building out a shed or small structure to make a house without a permit for Airbnb purposes, which violates FEMA law. Personal advantage comes in all shapes and sizes. Let's look back at the January third, nineteen seventy-seven article. Tarpon's nineteen seventy-six was the year of stormy whitecaps. The year began with the resignation of Earl K. Anderson, who for two years was a city manager. Perhaps the most frustrating experience for the nineteen seventy-six commission was this long and fruitless search for a permanent city manager. And these are all articles right here on newspaperarticle.com. You pay for your subscription, you can find it, they're all there. This article I found published January thirteenth, nineteen seventy-seven by Richard Konig, looks again for a city manager. "Without a permanent city manager for the past ten months, Tarpon Springs now hopes to choose the right man for what could be an increasingly important job by early summer. I think it's the foremost on everybody's mind to get moving on this again. We kind of struck out last year," Kolianos said during a work section. Charles Barnes, formerly, formerly the Utilities Director, has served as an acting city manager since the resignation of Earl K. Anderson last March. And here's another article I found dated August seventeenth, nineteen eighty. "Tarpon officials lash back at critics of manager turnover health unit. Tarpon is searching for a new city manager to replace Donald Sawyer, who quit over policy and personality differences between him and some of the commissioners. The new city manager to be selected from applicant, applicants this year will be the fifth in six years to work for Tarpon. And remember, we had a ten-month span, if we didn't have one, where I just read that article. Tarpon's apparent difficulty in keeping city administration prompted the Suncoast Organization to write a letter to the International City Management Association, asking that Tarpon somehow be identified in the association's trade publications as a trouble spot. Kolianos and Mayor Pizarro didn't appreciate being so identified." Here's another article dated January twenty-seven, or January twenty-second, nineteen eighty-one, titled "Tarpon Dives Finds Pearl of City Manager Right at the Shoreline," by Gary McElroy. "Tarpon Springs City Commissioners Took the Easy Way Out Tuesday Night, and They Enjoyed Doing It. Donald Sawyer quit the job six months ago because he could no longer the stomach of a board whose leadership wanted, demanded a yes-man as its chief administrator. The commission has a history of going through its managers as lions go through wildebeest, and always there to take over as interim, interim administrator has been Barnes. More than a hundred applications applied for the city manager position. The applicants waited for a response, then nothing, not anything, no action, nothing for all those months. Then a funny thing happened. Last week, a news reporter asked for Barnes to see the applicant's records, and Barnes refused, and no records of the commission said they are property of the board. Kolianos and Pizarro couldn't help but laugh at the coup. Kolianos served as Barnes' sponsor." As one other, one other note, newspaper poorly nominated in the pitch and swit, as one newspaper reporter nominally interested in the pitch and sway of Tarpon Springs politics said, "The good old boys pulled one over on the city slackers, and it's like Sheriff Lobo or something." On second, on second glance as well, the commission's decision takes on a logical look. It was, after all, the easy way out. And let's talk about the bully Jim Kolianos is. I have an article dated March sixth, nineteen eighty-one, titled "Engineer to Seek Residency Waiver" by Gary McElroy. "Tarpon Springs City Engineer Laliotis Said City Commissioners Who Attacked His Professionalism and the Competency of His Employees, James Kolianos Plowed Into the Laliotis." The engineer said he is considering resigning.
Mr. Kulyash, your time has expired.
No, that's ten minutes, I've still at eight fifty. You guys are cutting me two minutes short.
I'm sorry, that was my, my mistake, I thought it was only eight, I'm sorry.
Okay, continue.
So...
Continue.
The, the engineer said he is considering resigning. "I am tired of this continual harassment and professional abuse, tired of being fresh meat every Tuesday," Laliotis said. "You can't get good people if you can't pay them." Kolianos referred to the employees during the commission meeting as "dummies." Here's an, and a spokesperson for the Florida Water and Pollution Operations Association said his group resents members of their profession being referred to as "dummies" by Tarpon Springs Commissioner last Tuesday. Commissioner James Kolianos made the statement... Commissioner James Colianos made this statement during Tuesday's comments. Peter, uh, Kurt Peters Secretary Secretary Cheager in Pinellas County found the wastewater, the wastewater treatment plant to be lacking in proper equipment, not personnel. Peters said he received at least a half a dozen irate phone calls from the fellow members of the organization of, uh, hearing what Colianos had to say. Now, he- here's the, the one that goes through it all. It's called "Colianos: A Strongman in a Tough Spot." In his six years as city commissioner, Colianos had seen many woes at City Hall, the painful in-public dispatch of multiple city managers, city attorneys, city engine and city engineers. There were commission chamber feuds so personal and vindictive in nature that Police Chief Blaine LaCource was always on hand, in part because no one ever knew when things would go to blows. There have been many troubled times in Colianos's tenure, and they have come with regularity and intensity. Colianos has never won any popularity contest in the standard definition of that, in the standard definition of that phrase. In his time, Colianos has been booed, threatened, railed against, and has himself on occasion railed. Beneath the breaths of disgruntled commission crowds, he has been hissed. He's a straightforward man, a man who uses the, the word of, the word politician doesn't quite get him described. For Richard Nixon, it is a question of not having to kick around, not having him to kick around anymore. For James Colianos, many voters would say it's a question of not having the retiring commissioner around anymore on those occasions when it becomes necessary to do some kicking of his own. Long story short, no one will be bullying us.
Your time has expired, sir, your time has expired, thank you very much. Are there any other public comments?
Jim Colianos, Circle Drive, Tarpon Springs. Uh, I'm really sorry to have to take your guys' time up tonight. I've been listening to that litany of lies for the last five or six meetings. Constant lies, unverifiable lies, but he's an expert at it, and he never talks about himself. Who's attacked policemen more than one time? Who's been in jail? Who has been? Just go to the clerk of the courts file. Type in Panegiotis Kulyas, uh, Kulyas, and it'll be like twenty-eight instances of his misbehavior, okay? Listen, Chris Alahousses and I, your mayor, are good friends. I baptized his middle son. I'm not ashamed of that, I'm damn proud of it. He'll be my friend forever. Do we agree on everything? No, I can tell you that. If anybody thinks you can talk him into anything, you don't know Chris. It's the same way with the city manager. This young man thinks that I just protect Mark because we're great friends. He's never heard Mark and I talk off the record, okay? He lives in a dream world, a dream world where in his own house, his brother and cousin were some of the worst drug people there ever was. Now, I would expect if that was going on in my house, and I was a son of that mother left in the house, I would have done something about it, at least taken her out of the house. Not this guy. He's worried about Jim Colianos in nineteen seventy-six when he wasn't even born left. Haven't quite figured out why he doesn't like me, except that I won't take his bull, okay? I have with me so much that he's done wrong, it's embarrassing to have to say it. I would prefer that when you get to your rules and regulations, that you remember that the point of giving the public the right to speak about something is not on the agenda was for city business not on the agenda, not for Looney Tunes to come up and say he doesn't like Jim Colianos. A lot of people don't like me. I never was challenged in my last run for city commission. He forgot to tell everybody that. I stand by everything I ever did, firing city managers, making people do their job, that's what my job is, that's what your job is. Nobody sits back. You weren't elected to do anything but protect this city, that's what I did. If some people didn't like it, okay. It's fine, I don't like everything some people do either. I'm not afraid to stand up here and tell you, I can tell you the truth. Everything I did was above board, it was legal, and it's provable. Everything he says is a picture of me, and my wife likes those back in nineteen seventy-six, I'll tell you. But a picture of me, and then he goes into this storybook. You know, it was like he was talking at the last thing, and the boats go out-
Time has expired.
I'm sorry, I, I, I have somebody who will let me have more time, but I'm going home.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Are, are there any other public comments? I hear none, thank you. Mr. Jello, is a city attorney. We had people comment on things that had nothing to do with the ci- city issues and projects. Is that what the public comments are all about?
I mean, that would be at the purview of the board. Traditionally, public comment is for items not on the agenda that are related to city business. Certainly with the city's civility code, personal attacks are unacceptable, um, even as public comment regardless of who they are about. Um, but that would be a rule of procedure that the board would have to follow. Uh, whether or not you want to contain it that way, that is definitely a procedural and a policy decision based upon this commission.
Um, we will be discussing the rules and procedures in, in the near future, so we need to discuss that again. Thank you. We are now going to the presentations, item number one, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Foundation, Reverend Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Commissioners. It's somewhat ironic that we are doing this, uh, today, on this particular day, which is the one-year anniversary of the death of Mr. George Floyd. As you all know, he was murdered at the hands of a Minneapolis police officer after placing a knee on his neck for nine minutes and twenty-nine seconds. This sparked national and international, uh, protests, civil unrest, uh, for justice. In nineteen sixty-three, Dr. Martin Luther King created, uh, wrote a letter that became a document known as, known as the Birmingham Manifesto, which he invoked mandates for justice. A quote from that writing is, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." But it was that saying, that saying, and I use another quote from Dr. King, the fierce urgency of now that the Dr. Martin Luther King Event and Scholarship Foundation, uh, was determined to have a birthday celebration uh, in Tarpon Springs in January two thousand twenty-one, even if it had to be virtual. When I reached out to our city manager, Mark LaCource, uh, with this concept, uh, his response was very supportive. The request for city staff support was positive and put into place. Dr. Martin Luther King, uh, Foundation was able to pre-record our, uh, ceremony program in Craig Park. And I want to thank the city's, uh, Parks and Recreation Department, who made sure that everything was dressed up and in order. CMS at Palm Harbor produced that video, which is, uh, has been available to view on Facebook since January. We also didn't want the parade, uh, to go undone. So, we partnered with the city's IT staff to produce a virtual parade. We would use pictures from parades passed fixed to music for the presentation. This process would take vision, time, and expertise, uh, to make it turn out right. We're very thankful for the city's IT staff, uh, Mark Jump and Mike Reyes for their help in putting, uh, this together. They produced an excellent, uh, virtual parade experience. And, and, uh, we want to, uh, give them a little something to show our appreciation to them and to the city for, uh, allowing them to participate. Uh, Carmen Lake is gonna read this, uh, into the minutes, and, uh, I know they're probably busy upstairs, so I don't know if they can come down, or one can come down or not, but we have a presentation for them.
The first plaque reads, "Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Event and Scholarship Foundation, Inc., Presented to Mark Jump. For your dedication and support for the production of the twenty twenty-one Tarpon Springs, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Virtual Birthday Pa- Parade." John Lake President, I'm sorry, John Lake Parade Chairperson, Reverend Milton Smith, President. The second plaque, thank you. They did an awesome job.
He is right here if you want to present it to him.
Mark Jump, where are you, Mark? Thank you, sir. The second plaque reads, "Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Events and Scholarship Foundation, Inc., Presents to Mike Reyes For your dedication and support for the production of the twenty twenty-one Tarpon Springs, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Parade, Virtual Birthday Parade." John Lake Parade Chairperson, Reverend Milton Smith, President. Thank you, guys, you had, you just did an awesome job. Thank you.
And again, I want to thank the city for all of your cooperation over the years when it comes to the Dr. Martin Luther King Celebration in Tarpon Springs. It is important that we never forget and continue to make progress for racial des- justice and equality. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Reverend Smith, we're gonna go to our public comments, and then we're gonna have commission comments, if you will, wait a few minutes, please. Thank you. Uh, are there any public comments on this item? I hear none. Reverend Smith, first, I want to thank you for the services that you provide as a chaplain to our police department and to our fire department. Thank you for doing that. And I'd like to congratulate and to thank the Martin Luther King Jr. Foundation for the services that you provide to our community, the scholarships to the students for the parade, and also many other celebrations. Uh, as you all know, you always have my support, and thank you for everything you do. Vice Mayor Carter.
Uh, just, I'm gonna echo what the mayor said, no further comments, thank you.
Commission Donovan.
Yeah, it's so important that we continue to remember him and honor him and continue his legacy, so I really appreciate all the individual effort on your guys' behalf to continue to do that. I know it's not easy putting that together, especially not with COVID going on, so I really appreciate it, thank you.
Commissioner Ticores.
Thank you, I wanted to thank Reverend Smith for all the effort during COVID and appearing at the, uh, fire department events and memorials that we've had, so I very much appreciate that. Also, um, being a member of the IT, you seldom, seldom ever see them, the Information Technology Department, and it's very special when they're recognized. I'm sure Mr. Jump and Mr. Racy's are very appreciative of your recognition, and I'm just so happy to see that. It's, uh, it's a tough job. Um, all this discussion, you heard about Zoom and, and virtual reality and everything else, they're responsible for that, and they seldom get recognized for it, so thank you very much.
Thank you. We're now going to the item number two, which is Sustainability Committee Report. Ms. Larson?
All right, well, thank you. Is, is the presentation, it's here, how do we?
Mark, Mr. Jump? He was just here, Mr. Jump, we need your help.
Yeah, click from beginning, slide.
Perfect, all right, well, thank you for allowing us to present our annual update of the Sustainability Committee, and bless you. What a year it has been. Um, my name's Dory Larson, I live at eighteen forty-six Lexington Place. Um, so tonight, we are going to, uh, share work completed to date, and then we're going to talk about work in progress, future recommended projects and goals, and then recommendations to, to the BOC. Um, so as a reminder, our, the Sustainability Advisory Committee was formed by the Board of Commissioners in August of twenty nineteen. So, I wanted to also, uh, introduce some of the committee members that are here tonight. So, Dr. Paul Robinson is our vice chair, and Dr. Carol Mickett is also on the committee. And the others that are not here tonight, Karen Gallagher, Taylor Mandaloo, Denise Menino, and, um, Robin Sanger. So, we've been having our meetings, obviously, we were interrupted because of COVID, um, so that stopped us for a couple of months, then we went with, um, COVID, uh, virtual Zoom meetings, and we have been meeting regularly since, um, back here in the, um, City Hall, the third Tuesday, Thursday, the third Thursday at six P M. So, if anybody would like to come join us and be part of the Sustainability Committee, um, conversation, we would love to have you. Next slide. All right, so as a reminder of what sustainability and resilience means, sustainability is, in short, the capacity to endure. Resilience is the capacity to prepare and adapt. So, it's important that we're addressing both of those. Um, those are defined in Pinellas County's Toward a Sustainable and Resilient Pinellas, um, Plan that they just released. Uh, also, a reminder that we do have information on the city website on the sustainability page, so, um, it has links to our work and also guiding documents. So, if anyone, uh, on the commission or in the public would like to, um, see what we're, the work that we're working on, um, you have access to that information there. Um, so, this past year, we have been drafting a sustainability action plan, and what a sustainability action plan does is it, um, builds a framework toward a sustainable future by guiding our actions over a set time period, usually five years, um, with the intent to realign at that point. And it establishes goals and objectives. It also provides strategies on how to get there, timelines, um, metrics for measuring success, and also responsible parties, who's gonna do the work, city staff, and also, um, valued community partners. So, next slide. All right, so the committee reviewed, um, various other sustainability plans and other established frameworks, and we agreed to utilize the STAR framework. It's an established national standard as a starting point. Uh, the framework itself is free to use. The framework itself is free to use, so it doesn't cost money. And it allows us to complete the work in-house first, as a first draft, according to an established standard. So as you can see, the framework utilizes seven goal areas. And those goal areas are, it's small, so I'll read them. The Built Environment, Climate and Energy. Economy and Jobs is the green column. Education, Arts, and Community. The light blue is Equity and Empowerment. The next is Health and Safety. And then the last is Natural Systems. So we've been going through each of those goal areas and looking at the objectives, which are the cells in each of the columns. And then we're working as a group to establish our outcomes that we'd like to see for each of these objectives, and then also local actions. So those are steps that the city is going to work on to help get us there. So while we're working on Sustainability Action Plan, we also have accomplished some other work that we wanted to share. So we sent out a flyer, Did You Know flyer, in the utility bill to do two things, to inform the community that we have a Sustainability Committee, and then also to seek input from the community for our action plan. And we also have been collecting some initial community data from listening sessions that we did together with the Extension Office. And we also started capturing baseline data because it's important to have that baseline to start. So when you go on a diet, you got to get on the scale, see where you're starting from. And that's what we've been doing. So Public Services has been collecting greenhouse gas data. They've looked at carbon dioxide emissions by city sector, so breaking it down by buildings and facilities, traffic lights and signals, the city's fleet, solid waste facilities, and then combined water and wastewater treatment facilities. They've also looked at gallons of fuel used by the city in gallons, electrical consumption in kilowatt hours, water use trends. And then also, the Planning Department has helped to capture open space baseline data. So we also recommended participation in the Duke Clean Energy Connection Program that will allow the city to purchase renewable energy. That will help to lower our greenhouse gas footprint. We also sent over a recommendation to the, to y'all, to send a letter to the Florida Public Service Commission regarding FICA, the, which is the Florida Energy Efficiency and Conservation Act, asking for more stringent energy efficiency measures. And you guys did that. So thank you for sending that letter up to the state. We also partnered with the Arborist and Parks and Rec Department to promote the free tree giveaway. So the city gave away 250 trees this year with that effort. Awesome. So some of the work in progress that we're still completing and working on is, the city is looking at a Vulnerability Assessment and Action Plan. So that is still in process. We're also providing input to the Planning and Zoning Department staff on areas of interest for strategic planning, for the comprehensive plan, and also for the Land Development Code updates. We are aligning our Sustainability Action Plan with the comprehensive plan because they need to be working together. We're also aligning our Sustainability Action Plan with the, hopefully with the strategic plan that's coming. And we intend to complete our Sustainability Action Plan in the next couple of months. So future projects and goals are to review the Land Development Code amendments for recommendations that relate to promoting sustainability, and then also aligning the Land Development Code and with the comprehensive plan and strategic plan. We also recognize that community engagement is an essential component to the success of the Sustainability Action Plan. So we are looking to start in the future, in-person events again, to collect feedback and have listening sessions from the community about what they value in terms of the Sustainability Action Plan, and look forward to using the Bang the Table feature on the website to help us also collect feedback from the community on the local actions that we have recommended. So our recommendations to, to y'all tonight are to fund sustainability efforts. The second is to create a full-time staff position. Paul Smith and Ashley Tobin are our staff liaisons, and they are wonderful. And this is not a critique of them at all. But, you know, federal funding requires grants. It's time consuming. And the city could benefit from full-time 40 hours a week working on that. So part of the backup is a spreadsheet of what other communities have in terms of sustainability staff with, with salary ranges and job descriptions. Also included is the Sustainability and Resilience Director Job Description for the City of St. Petersburg for your review. Also, the City of St. Pete is actually hiring their fourth sustainability position to support all of the work. So there is, there's definitely enough work to be done. And then also looking to university assistants for, for help, and also looking at some consultants for some of the work. For example, the, the Vulnerability Assessment and Action Plan. And then finally, recommendation are, you know, to ensure that the Sustainability Committee is given the opportunity to provide meaningful input into the strategic plan, assuring that the strategic plan prioritizes sustainability and resilience, becoming a more sustainable community by enhancing our city's environment, economy, and quest for equity, providing our natural resources for future, or protecting, rather, our natural resources for future generations, and growing environmental stewardship across the community. And then finally, preparing for the impacts of climate change through proactive resiliency planning, mitigation, and adaptation. And that's what we have. So thank you.
Thank you. We got to go to public comments if you want to wave a little bit. Are there any public comments on this item?
Here to Lax 514 Ashland Avenue. Though it's a little bit hard to read there. And people online can't read it. So just want to highlight a couple of things here. I want to thank first, Dory and Dr. Robinson. I don't know the other, like, Carol, is it? God bless you all for your involvement. Took years to get some kind of an environmental committee. Years ago, we tried to advocate for that. And I remember Mark telling my friend Carl Wagonfer, "We don't need an environmental action committee. We got the Friends of the Ankleod out there watching things, and we're still watching things." But now we have an additional resource. So on page 13, if you look online, out of 19 recommendations to the BOC, "Becoming a More Sustainable Community by Enhancing Our City's Environment, Economy, and Equity." Too often, people think that you can't have environment and economy at the same time. And that's not true. Because one, as you'll discuss later with the dredge project and Mr. Vratakiotis's letter for help to Mr. Eggers, this city began and flourished because of its relationship with the environment. Sponges, natural sponges. That industry would have been kept going if it wasn't for an algae bloom and some other things that happened. And maybe that was not preventable. But why are we getting algae blooms? A lot of nitrogen and phosphates and pollution pouring into the water. You don't look at those things in the future. You're just looking at something right now. So, "More Sustainable Community, City's Environment, Economy, and Equity by looking at your environment as a resource. It's a natural resource. And the only way it keeps providing as a resource is if it keeps it natural," which goes to point three. "Protect our natural resources for future generations and grow environmental stewardship across the community." This committee is doing it, but this board could do more. You could sponsor, if you had that property out there, you could have all these schools come and do research. One of our things we've talked about is partnering with USF, Eckerd College, Sampdoria College. There's different environmental, the Marine Society to set up a project lab there. And you bring the high school students, the middle school students, and the elementary school students. And you educate them early and show them the value of our natural resources. We don't get too much sponges now. And part of the reason they are coming back is we've made some efforts in trying to clean the water, right? I've been going out to Key Vista Park, just north of the Ankleod Power Plant. Beautiful park. Nice trails, runs along the river. The other day, it was low tide. You could see the grass flats that are growing in. Fiddler crabs, thousands of them. I haven't seen that in ages. So we can restore what we've messed up. So instead of showing off and I'm an arbor city while I'm allowing a project to cut 1,000 trees out, and then you're, you could say, "Oh, we got a Sustainability Committee." Well, take their recommendations, get some sort of liaison within the city to start putting some of these programs together to help this board, to help the community save what's left of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on this item?
Panayotis Cuyas, 595 Peninsula Avenue. I'm not sure when this Sustainability Committee was formed. And I understand they're giving recommendations. But I don't know how much input or acceptance of these recommendations you guys are listening to that they're trying to give you. I'm looking at the sponge docks. Summertime's coming up, thunderstorms left and right. We got plenty of intersections that are going to be flooding because of stormwater drainage issues that fall back to, unfortunately, city management and Public Works Department heads. I would, at some point, when are we going to accept the fact that a department head is a department head, and they must live with, live with inside the city? That's what we voted on. We didn't vote on limited department heads. So, and it's important that a department head that's in charge of stormwater and roads live with inside the city, not 30 minutes away from the city. So the Sustainability Committee should be able to help push and confirm stuff like that to make our management on sustainability a lot better. There were, several months ago, a presentation that was brought about seawalls and level rise and building those seawalls. I hope the Sustainability Committee had a lot of, was able to interact with the board and, and work with engineers in our city to see a comprehensive plan or strategic, strategic strategy to attack all those seawalls for increasing sea level rise. And, you know, I'd also like to see future recommendations and project goals. I was a little upset when we, you know, when it comes to protecting our natural resources for future generations and grow environmental stewardship across the community. This was a perfect opportunity for the Sustainability Committee to be able to come in. When we were talking about Ankleod Harbors, they have a big voice. Their, their voice is heard across hundreds, if not thousands, of people. They could have helped make a stance publicly before the second notice. I don't know if they did or didn't. But they are leaders in helping future Tarponites with green space, you know, trying to burn fossil fuels, solar energy, everything. So we need to make sure that the committee's formed to really help the future of the citizens and not just let someone give it to this group to form it. And then they don't listen to your recommendations when you guys give it to them. So I'm not trying to offend anybody, but their input is really, really important when it comes to green space, trees being taken away, and natural waterfront space. And I want their voice to be mattered a lot more. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments on this item? Any other public comments on this item? Here none? Okay. Ms. Dory Larson. I want to thank you for the report, and also want to thank all the committee members for, and also Mr. Smith and staff, for your hard work and dedication. And also, I want to thank you for the input that you gave me in regards to the sea level rise. Appreciate that. The Sustainability Action Plan that you are working on is going to be very, very beneficial to us because we, as you know, we in the process of developing strategic plan, and also updating our comprehensive plan, I think is the, the right time to do this. So we combine all this information together. That'll be very, very, very useful. So thank you for all the hard work that you do. In regards to creating another position as a Sustainability Coordinator, I would like to have more addition discussion to see what this position will provide that our current staff that cannot provide, Mr. Smith and the, and the staff. So I would like to see, I would like to have more discussion on that. Again, thank you. Vice Mayor Carter, any comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo the same as the mayor. I appreciate you all that you're doing as being one of the voting members of the founding committee. I'm happy to see that you all are moving forward with this, with different actions that you're providing to the board. I appreciate the update and all the recommendations you provided to the board. I want to express my gratitude to all the volunteers that are sitting in the board and all the expertise as well. So thank you for your time, and thank you for your input throughout this time. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I actually just had a couple of questions on the presentation, but they're just for my own education. So if, if, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but if there's something you can't answer, can later, you can just email me. I was just looking at the Sustainability Action Plan draft, and some of the stuff it mentions, you know, I think we've heard before, like, it, it mentions green infrastructure multiple times. What's an example of that? Would that be something similar to what Dr. Robinson presented to us a few meetings ago?
It could be living seawalls, increasing trees, looking at green roofs, looking at bio swales. There's lots of different ways that you can, the idea is to try to make water collection and retention or cooling of buildings with a natural solution.
Okay. And then on the same draft plan, it mentions local and market-based funding strategies for acquiring land preservation. Other than grants, what does that look like?
Could be partnering with foundations. I mean, a lot of, like, similarly, what happened with the Margaret Douglas property in Dunedin, where their community came together and worked out public-private partnerships to find funds that were, you know, privately donated, and then also looking for, for grants.
Okay. And then as far as the STAR framework goes, do those goals and objectives ever compete with each other? I'm just trying to get a better grasp for the framework. Is there like a priority based on the different blocks? Or is it kind of all, all these are important equally?
Yeah, they're all important. And some of them are more pertinent to our city than others. And so our Sustainability Action Plan is going to look different than, say, St. Petersburg's. They also use the STAR framework for their Sustainability Action Plan. You know, obviously, they're more built up, so they're going to have to do more redevelopment and, and work with, like, you know, on that. We've got more green space that we could maybe work with more in the natural systems column.
Okay.
But they're alphabetic. That's, they're, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the idea is that one isn't more important than the other.
As, as you all know, budget season's approaching. We're getting into the full swing of it here. What type of sustainability budget items would the committee prioritize? Obviously, we've, we've heard, you know, hiring a full-time staff position. Is there anything else from the committee perspective that would be a priority for this upcoming budget?
Well, I mean, we did request the, the Vulnerability Assessment and, and Action Plan to go to the state. I believe you guys wanted feedback on what we wanted, or what we were recommending. So that was part of it. But I, it's my understanding that we have funding secured to make that happen through grants. But then, you know, I don't know that we have like an itemized list of priority, and I wouldn't want to speak on behalf of the rest of the committee. But that's something that we've already pre-identified.
And I think something helpful for the discussion would be a better gauge of the Sustainability Coordinator's nine to five. Like, what is that going to look like? How are we going to hold them accountable? What are their expectations going to be? What's going to differentiate them from what we have now? Is really kind of what, what perspective I'm taking on it. So I don't know if there's an additional memorandum or something like that. But basically, it's, it's what is this position going to do that we don't have currently? And is it just time?
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to provide additional backup other than what was in the backup, which provided the job description for St. Petersburg's Resiliency Director.
Okay, thank you very much. Those are the only questions I have. But really, I just want to kind of echo what, what the mayor mentioned in that we're really thankful for you guys doing it. It's a particularly difficult board because you're kind of the founding fathers of it, trying to carve your own way. And I appreciate staff as well for adding that to their plate and working with you guys as a liaison. So thank you guys very much.
Commissioner Ticores.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Larson, and Dr. Robinson, and the entire Sustainability Committee. I think it's a wonderful plan, at least to where you are right now. And I know it's going to continue. I know you've made certain recommendations in there. And also, before we go any further, I want to thank Mr. Smith. He sits there quietly, but he's there at every meeting and giving guidance and everything.
And a lot of backup. And a lot of backup.
Yeah, and, because I'm gonna mention him in a minute as well as far as follow-up comments. I think the presentation is great and the recommendations are good, and I just don't want us to leave it here tonight like we've listened to you and that's the end of it. I really feel, the way things have worked at the city is we've got an advisory board such as a sustainability committee, and the commission has identified a liaison for that, which would be the city manager, and then in turn he identifies a liaison, which is Mr. Smith. And that's fine, but where that loop is closed is the Sustainability Committee comes and reports to the commission as it should, and they brought with them several recommendations. And I feel that what we need to do is take an administrative vote tonight, one, to accept the presentation, and number two, to accept the recommendations. And what that does, it serves the purpose of providing direction to the city manager from the city commission that that's the direction we want to go and that he should work with the Sustainability Committee in basically making those recommendations become a reality. There may be some issues that he identifies, but certainly he can bring those back to us. But unless we provide that direction to the city manager, there's some chance that what we hear tonight, we may be hearing it again the next time Mr. Larson is up here providing the presentation. So, that's the one thing. In April 28th, I sent a memorandum to the city manager concerning the Sustainability Coordinator, and I gave some rationale in that. One, as Mrs. Larson pointed out tonight, sustainability encompasses several areas, environmental, social, and economic, not just environmental or the ecology. And we are working on a strategic plan and we are all working on a comprehensive plan. And one byproduct out of that entire effort, including what the Sustainability Committee is doing right now, is gonna be updates and actually new ordinances that are gonna be sustainability in nature. And right now, as I've expressed before, I think the planning department, who's gonna be responsible for all those ordinances, is kind of stretched thin. So, I feel that as far as a responsibility Sustainability Coordinator, that would be part of their role, working in the planning department, creating these updates to ordinances, creating new ordinances, interfacing and interacting with the strategic planning process, the comprehensive planning process, all those things that Mrs. Larson's has mentioned tonight. Now, Mr. Smith is an excellent, an outstanding, actually, department head, and he's got a great deal of responsibilities. You're gonna hear a little later with the water and sewer sufficiency analysis. And I know that he's a good soldier, and when he's given orders, he basically says "Aye aye" and he can, he carries them out as much as he can. But for me personally, I think it's unfair to continue laying additional responsibility on him. As this Sustainability Action Plan progresses and that begins to expand, the work in that area, especially when it gets to the comprehensive plan, the strategic plan, and those ordinances, there's only two people that are gonna do that. It's either gonna be Mr. Smith or it's gonna be Ms. Vincent. And I think both it's unfair to them, and that's why I think we need a Sustainability Coordinator. I think that what I would like to do, in addition to adopting the sustainability recommendations that Mrs. Larson presented here tonight for direction to the city manager, is also to direct the city manager to work up a job description and have it ready for our work session, which will go over the personnel and also salary reviews, Mayor, that you've asked for as well. Now, in that work session, I know the city manager's got some positions that he wants to bring forward. I am very interested in the Sustainability Coordinator, and I think by the time we get to that work session with all of this job description and everything worked out, this commission will have plenty of time to consult with Mrs. Larson and Mr. Smith as far as what role and how much responsibility would that Sustainability Coordinator have and what is something that Mr. Smith can do and what he can't do that we would have this expectation for that person in the future. So, I wholeheartedly support the Sustainability Action Plan. I think when we established this committee, it wasn't just to provide words that we're doing something. I think we really need something, and it's fortuitous that we're also updating our strategic plan and our comprehensive plan at the same time, and it all works together. And I think we need to provide the resources that make sure that they're all integrated as well when we're done with this process. If we're not, we're gonna have some holes here and there and we're gonna not, we're gonna wonder why we didn't take action beforehand. So, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the Strategic Action Plan update that Mrs. Larson gave and also to accept the recommendations of the Sustainability Committee and also direct the city manager to develop the job description for the Sustainability Coordinator in preparation for our work session to discuss the personnel and also salary reviews of the city.
Have a motion?
That's a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it for discussion, but I have a couple of questions.
I really don't have a problem to accept the recommendations of the committee, but again, as I said earlier, that addition discussion, we need addition discussion on the, perhaps, and see why do we need this, to create this position, as I said earlier.
I want to make sure my motion is not to actually create that position. My motion is for the city manager to develop the job description based on what Mrs. Larson has recommended, something that is something for us to understand internally to the city rather than what we would be provided from the city of St. Petersburg. And that would actually be discussed, as you're describing, during the work session when we talk about the personnel and the salary review. It's not establishing that position, but also between now and that time, I think the commission will have plenty of time to get the types of questions that you're describing answered as well. You could talk to Mrs. Larson, you could speak to Mr. Smith about that, the city manager. What I'm getting at is, I'm trying to be a little proactive here, so when we don't, when we get to that work session and we're talking about salary reviews and we're talking about other people bringing positions forward, somehow the Sustainability Coordinator's been forgotten about, and I don't want to do that. That's something I asked for back in this memorandum that I sent the city manager in April 28th. At least that's my rationale behind it.
Well, the information that I'm looking for is to see if this position, that what the position is going to provide, that the current staff cannot provide.
Well, that would be in the job description, and that would be created with the help of Mr. Smith, Mrs. Neffin, our Human Resources Director, Mrs. Vincent, and also Ms. Larson. I mean, my point to you is you can't get your questions answered unless you've got something in front of you to look at, and that's all I'm asking is to create that document for you to look at.
Any other comments?
I got a couple of comments. City Attorney, this is a bit unique that we're voting on a motion for presentation to accept multiple different things on a presentation. Is this going along with guidelines or resolutions or, I mean, can you help me out on this process on what's been made with the first and a second?
Sure. So, during the discussion, I mean, a formal motion is definitely something that can be undertaken. I was thinking more of a consensus vote if there was action that the board wanted to take with regard to the recommendations to give direction to the city manager to come back before the board. The motion was pretty specific. It does have a second, so it is on the table. It's not something that the board can vote to institute, as was brought up, the position, but it is something, the motion said that it would be discussed at a future work session. So, I'm not necessarily sure that the motion was needed. It's not necessarily something that's been done, at least with my presence here before the board in the past, but it's not something that would be inappropriate. Usually it would be done by agreement or consensus of the board to give the city manager some direction to follow up. This is just a more formal process to do that.
Okay, thank you. So, there's multiple things in here that are great. I think we need to address. So, create a full-time staff position. I don't agree with that, and I definitely don't agree with putting it in the planning department. I think it needs to go in the engineering department or project administration department. I think it should be a multi-facet, if the board feels that this is appropriate, I think it should be a multi-facet position. The position could focus on grants as a whole. They could have some expertise. I would prefer to see it being an engineer instead of a planner. The city spends a significant amount of money on engineering a year. I don't remember what it is, $400,000 a year plus. So, if there's a sustainability director, leader, manager, whatever the title would be, I think it makes sense to put it in the engineering department. Right now, I'm not ready to make that decision or nor make the recommendation to bring it back next month for a board meeting as a workshop. I'm happy to talk about it further, but I think we need to talk as a board a little bit more and look at some options on what department it should be in, but I don't think the planning department is where it should be at all overall. But I'm happy to look at the other ones as a whole, but I'm not gonna be able to support tonight. Create a full-time staff position that's on the motion, which is the recommendation to the BOC, so I can't support it tonight. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Carr? Mayor, may I just clarify the one point?
We go to the, and then we'll come back to you if you want.
This might help you, because I was gonna ask this anyway. Can you repeat what your actual motion is?
All it is, is to accept the Sustainability Action Plan update and the annual presentation by the Sustainability Committee to adopt the recommendations, and that would be specifically for giving direction to the city manager to work on those recommendations because they are an advisory board to the commission, not to the city manager. And so, I think it's important that we follow through and close the loop on that. And then the other part is simply to create a job description for the Sustainability Coordinator. I want to, and getting back to that point, I want to make it clear, I don't, this is just my thought as far as where it belongs. I think ultimately it's gonna be the city manager that makes that recommendation to the commission, and then we can discuss it at the appropriate time. And all I'm asking for is to have that written information in front of us at the work session. If we don't have, I'm not sure when we are gonna get it. If we don't have it for the work session, that's gonna go over the salary reviews and those additional personnel matters that, or additional positions that the city manager, I know, wants to bring, at least three more. Mr. Smith has brought two more on already, and I've discussed the Sustainability Coordinator on several times with the city manager and as well as close the loop with him on this memorandum on April 28th. It's not establishing the position. It's just creating the information so we can have the type of discussion that Vice Mayor Carr's talking about. And in deference to the city attorney, I feel it is needed. I don't like consensus. I've never liked consensus. Consensus means if one person objects, then you don't do it. I think a formal vote shows that it's an acknowledgement and a specific direction of the city manager to implement the wishes of the city commission. Does that answer the question?
It does, yeah. So, I think we're just kind of on a word hangup. I think it's just the wording of the motion itself, because the motion itself is asking that we adopt the recommendations to the board of commission. And, you know, for me, and this is across the board, I don't agree to anything I don't have a dollar sign to. You know, like fund sustainability efforts, create a full-time staff position, look at consultants for some of work. Those are some of the recommendations that by approving the motion, we would be adopting, and that's just stuff I don't have any dollar signs to. I mean, how much leeway are we gonna give the consultants for sustainability work? Are we gonna create the full-time staff position? What's their salary gonna be? What's the insurance benefits, that kind of stuff gonna be? So, I mean, I think, I think we're all in agreement with talking about this at a work session, and then budget season's coming up. It's time to, you know, put the money where the mouth is and create the position or not. So, again, if you want to amend the motion to say, hey, city manager, work with them on these recommendations in the presentation to bring them to us in a work session or in budget season, I'm good to go with that. I'll second that.
That's my intent. That's my intent, and I'd be happy to amend the motion to that effect.
Okay. I'll second the amendment then.
And roll call, please.
Can I just have some clarification?
You have something else?
Yep, there's a point of clarification. Can you just repeat what that is one more time so I understand what we're voting on?
My understanding is that the city manager is gonna work to bring these recommendations to the board of commission, either via work session or the budget.
Okay, so we're not adopting the recommendations?
No, we are not adopting the recommendations straight up. We're gonna, we're gonna discuss them in a work session as a budget, and then the...
Yeah, the idea is to provide the city manager direction to work on them, and that's what I meant by adopting, not to actually, for example, say we're gonna hire consultants to assist the Sustainability Committee. That's not it. But he can look into the concept, the idea of doing that and bring that back to us in terms of cost, whether it would be better to have a Sustainability Coordinator or have consultants or have both in that regard.
Okay.
And my point is, if we don't do that...
No, I understand. That makes more sense. That makes more sense. I've got a question for Ms. Larson if I could ask her real quick. I know you all provided a spreadsheet with different dollar signs and different items, and I believe Commissioner Donovan asked earlier too, is there some items that you can provide that might be something, I don't know, maybe a wish list or something along those lines, or a top priority of items that would be best for expenditures in this year's budget, next year's budget, and the following year's budget? Is that something that the board has looked at to propose, like this would be, something we'd be interested in? Because in the past, I'm more interested in spending money in an environmental-friendly, green aspect, like spend $100,000 on a project that's gonna help the environment over the position. So, I could see right now we're heading in a different direction, but I would like to hear some additional items from you all on what it would be great to see in this year's budget and moving forward. Is that a problem?
We've got our next meeting, I'm not sure when it'll line up with your workshop to be able to provide feedback.
This next workshop's not gonna be needed. It's about staffing, so we don't need that for our next meeting, but as we're heading towards budget season, which we're gonna have some multiple budget workshops, it'd be nice to have some items. We've been working with the state with some items down in the sponge docks, the vaulting, right, the dredge and some other aspects. But overall, like what can we do as a city with the recommendation of the Sustainability Committee to be more sustainable with our dollars, right, and how do we spend those? It's not, I'm not gonna say it's gonna be a large part of our budget this year, but it's gonna be, could be something. I would like to see something in our budget at least that we could go towards that direction. So, just like to make that recommendation to you all as well.
Okay, I'll take that back. Thank you.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuza?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Larson.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is another presentation for water and sewer rate sufficiency study fiscal year 2021. 2021.
Ready for me? Okay. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Ron Herring, Finance Director. We're here tonight to present the Water and Sewer Revenue Sufficiency Study. The city water and sewer revenue sufficiency studies have been formed about every one to three years by the city. The last study was performed in 2018, which approved rates through fiscal year 2028. Studies have been performed by the city for almost 30 years, first by Burton and Associates, which was later folded under StanTech. The same employees from Burton and Associates have been working with the city for 20-plus years, so they have a good working knowledge of our system. Staff has been working with us, consultants, which includes Mr. Smith and his staff and Bob Robertson. We've been working on it since January, what we're gonna present tonight. We believe we have come up with very, two very good options to select from. Andy Burnham, Vice President and Director of Management Consulting with StanTech is here to present this year's study. You know, I asked him for his bio. It's about two pages long, so I'll just hit a couple bullet points here and stuff. Andy leads one of the largest teams in the country focused on financial planning and utility rates. His team works with 375 communities across North America, including 125 communities in the state of Florida, and I believe he works with almost every city in Pinellas County. He has been recognized as an industry expert as part of the providing testimony in utility rate-related regulatory proceedings in multiple states and territories, has supported the issuance of $1 billion of bonds for projects in the past five years. He's also a member of many communities, committees in his industry. I didn't want to name them all, and has authorized practice manuals... to name them all, and has authorized practice manuals, policy guidelines, reports, and was recently appointed as a trustee to the AWWA's Management and Leadership Division. And so in a nutshell, Andy has a lot of knowledge in this area, is well-respected, and has worked with the city for twenty-plus years. And now I'll give you Andy.
Thank you, Ron. Hi. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Pleasure to be here. Um, I have a brief presentation, and then hopefully we can go through some discussion about the options. So, it, as Ron said, we're in a fortunate opportunity to have, I think, a, a discussion about two very good options for your utility. Um, just by way of a, a repetition for just the sake of understanding a scope, these revenue sufficiency studies that are conducted periodically at the city provide really a multi-year financial plan, or almost a blueprint, if you will, of projections of revenues, operating expenses, capital improvement projects, and how to fund them over a multi-year period, and the associated rate adjustments necessary to fund those identified expenditure requirements. All those analyses have a given set of assumptions and reflect the most current available data at the time that they're updated. Uh, the last time that the city had done a prior study was about three years ago in two thousand and eighteen, and that study in fact looked at current conditions at the time, and at that point in time lowered the approved plan of increases that were identified from what was six point seven five percent a year down to four percent per year, um, and then identified the current plan of increases that we have in place now at two point seven five percent per year for indexing that extend through fiscal year twenty twenty-eight. So, what we've done this year is the traditional update process to incorporate the most current available data. So, we looked at your audited fund balances for the last fiscal year, updated revenue and expenses for two thousand and nineteen, as well as twenty twenty-one for the expenditure side, trying to take into account pandemic-related considerations as part of the process to normalize those in our forecast of both revenues and expenses operating in capital. And we also included the most current ten-year capital improvement program, um, at a project-level detail as identified by staff. And so that represents a lot of the fundamental base information that goes into the analysis. But then there's a lot of additional analysis performed to identify assumptions about how do we carry forward some of these things into the future for projections of, let's say, growth and revenues due to new accounts. Previously, we had used conservative assumptions of twenty-five new accounts per year. As part of this update, we've looked at additional resources from, say, the University of Florida and their Bureau of Economics and Business Research to take their population projections and to inform our growth assumptions for future revenue expectations from development or redevelopment in the city. So, we've increased the growth assumption in this year's study versus the prior study from three years ago. Similarly, we've also evaluated the escalation factors or inflation factors on our operating expenses, looked at individual line items. In fact, public work staff reached out to Duke Energy for guidance on expected electric increases for the next couple of years. And we looked at individual line item expenses by category and also compared them to the recent history. So while we went to a detailed level for cost escalation factors, we took the overall forecasted growth rate and confirmed that that actually reflected the four-year trend in actual operating expenses for the utility to make sure, again, we were validating those assumptions as part of the process. Similarly, we looked at capital expenditure ratios. And while we have the capital improvement program, it's about six million dollars per year. If you look at historical actual spending, not necessarily just encumbrances, but actual spending, pre-pandemic levels are about four point four, four point one million per year, and obviously a little less in twenty twenty. So, we've baseline our forecast consistent with those historical spending levels. That results in an execution factor on current budgets at seventy-five percent, which was previously assumed at eighty-eight percent in the twenty eighteen study. And, uh, also, we've incorporated updated policies that would affect the revenue requirements of the system, such as the interfund transfer, which is presently at eight percent versus what it was in the prior study at six and a half percent. All of these things really come together to help us understand our options as we sit here today. And so, what we've developed on the screen, I'm going to start with the top bar, which is in yellow, which represents the future utility bills for typical residential customer under the current approved rate plan or the status quo, if you will. If we continue to index at two point seven five percent per year, and you can see how those increases in the bill would be about three dollars on that monthly bill and round numbers per year. However, with the updated assumptions in our analysis, the additional revenues that would be generated from the status quo are in excess of our targets based on those assumptions and our current data. So, we've developed two alternative options for your consideration that I'll go over in a moment. But before we develop those options, we also looked at what happens if we don't have any rate increases? Given our current assumptions and the existing cost requirements, will our current revenues meet our projected requirements over the ten-year time period? And that's that blue line. Where if we hold utility rates flat over this entire time period, what would happen? Well, what would happen is we'd have to borrow about fifteen million dollars for capital improvement projects, and our reserves would go below our three-month policy target during this forecast period. So, it helped us understand that the status quo would be generating more than what we need for our identified expenditures, and not doing anything wouldn't satisfy them. So, we developed two options for consideration that would meet our identified requirements. Uh, the first option would involve holding rates flat, so no increase in utility rates for three years, and then resuming with the two point seven five percent indexing plan. That's the gray bar that's on the screen now. So, that would mean no rate increases for three years for utility rates, and then resuming the two point seven five percent indexing plan. Given our positive performance, we have the ability to suspend that for three years. Alternatively, we looked at a scenario of actually reducing rates, um, in fiscal year twenty-two, uh, by two point two percent, uh, that would take the typical bill down to about a hundred and thirteen dollars. So, a reduction on the typical bill of about two dollars and fifty cents per month. Thereafter, we'd be able to hold that flat for two years, but then we would have to index that at three point seven five percent per year instead of the two point seven five percent plan. So, it's a little bit lower on the utility bill earlier, but as you get to the end of the forecast period, that would result in a higher utility bill in the long term. So, it would be an alternative plan that would address the sustainability of the utility, but also provide some near-term affordability considerations as part of the planning process. We have two stacked, uh, vertical lines on here that represent the intended frequency of looking at studies. So, we're looking at the current evaluation of the revenue adequacy today. In a couple of years, we would recommend that we would again perform a similar analysis that could then chart the course for what those indexing adjustments might need to be going in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five under either of these two options. Um, so we think that would be a, a helpful practice to be able to confirm with updated assumptions and date at that time what the level of indexing needs are for the system, uh, to make sure that we're on, on target with our requirements. Uh, as was mentioned, um, you know, we have identified the two options for consideration. Hopefully, this makes this a little bit easier to read, uh, for the public in terms of the dollar amounts of each option. Um, again, you can see, as I mentioned, that by about fiscal year twenty-seven, the, uh, alternative two plan or option two has a slightly higher utility bill than the first option, uh, but in the near term, it's lower up until that point. Uh, both options allow us to meet our system requirements. Uh, it's really a matter of understanding your choices and consequences in terms of near-term lower rates versus potentially high turn, higher rates in the future with, given the same set of assumptions and projections. Uh, but the typical bills obviously are very comparable under each option, albeit slightly higher in the alternative two by the end of the forecast period. Uh, we've wanted to put some context around these options with an understanding of how your rates compare to other agencies in Pinellas County and the greater region. And so, looking back at two thousand and eighteen, we identified for a typical residential user, what, six thousand five hundred gallons per month, what is their water and sewer bill as compared to the bills for other agencies in the area? And we could see at that point in time, we were among the highest in the area, about fifteen dollars greater than the average. As we move to today and reflecting the results of the last study where we had lower, more moderate plans of increases, you can see we've actually moved down the chart. Others have gone up at much higher rates of increase, while we've been going up at more moderate levels of increases, such that we're approaching the, the local average. And as we play things forward, um, as Ron mentioned, we work with many of the communities in the area and, and know of their approved rate plans or rate studies that are in progress or their typical levels of increases. We're able to project things forward to twenty twenty-four to say, well, how would we compare three years from now, given the trends in utility rate increases that we're seeing locally in approved plans? And we did this with option two to see that we actually would fall down to be very comparable in cost to the other agencies three years from now, under either of these two options, but this is with option two. So, again, I think from a, a cost comparison standpoint, this is probably moving in a desirable direction relative to cost competitiveness against other agencies in the area. We broke this down a little bit further as well to look at just what are the trends from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-four, both on a dollar basis on the left-hand side and a percentage basis. What is the amount of change in each of these communities' rates at that six thousand five hundred gallon level? And so, you can see that Tarpon Springs dollar change has been seven dollars and seventy-six cents, um, over that time period under option two. Um, and, uh, the percentage change would be one point two percent. So, it would be the lowest rate of change over that time period of really any of the agencies in the area. So, I think it's a good testament to responsible management of the system and doing everything that you can to control your costs, um, to your citizens, but also provide safe and reliable service. So, as I said, I think it's a, a very good position and, and good, um, choice of two positive alternatives today that we've got presented for you. So, as mentioned, there's been a number of positives that have happened since the two thousand and eighteen study. We've also refined assumptions, uh, to a, a very specific degree to make sure that we have the forecast as dialed in as we can today based upon current information and assumptions. Um, and we have the two options before you. One would be a rate freeze for three years or a rate reduction followed by two years of no increases, um, two very good options, um, which after either of those two periods, there would be some indexing required to allow the utility to fund needed reinvestment in infrastructure and maintain its, um, debt ratios, operating reserves, and cover operating expenses. Um, so, our recommendation would be to pursue either option, but then to perform an updates to make sure that we stay on course and manage the system as responsibly as we can to changing conditions while meeting our financial requirements, but considering affordability to our customers. So, with that, I would be happy to entertain any questions, comments, or discussion.
Thank you for presenting to us your analysis on the, uh, water and sewer revenue. We're going to go to the public comments, and we'll come back and going to have a BOC discussion, and we're going to ask you some questions if we have any.
Very good.
If you stand by, please. Are there any public comments on this item?
[inaudible 595, Peninsula Avenue]. Uh, I, I appreciate the, the gentleman coming up at here and just giving us all the information we needed. Um, back about a year ago, there was a rumor and a complaint about we paying anywhere from ten to twenty percent premium, premium on our water and waste management. And, um, by looking at the two options, I see the one is a little bit more consistent. Um, does that take into effect, um, funding purposes, being able to use funding more on the backend towards water waste treatment facility, or, uh, by having the, the decrease on the front end of one of the options, uh, does that create less money to be able to have service for the, the community? Um, so, just overall, if you could speak and talk about how the one option where it seemed like it was going to put us down in the middle of all the other cities when it comes to rates, I think it's very important considering, as he just showed, that we were one of the top two or three highest rates in the county. And, um, if we just could have the most simplest approach of explaining to us what our best option is for the future Tarpon Springs, for the citizens, and the funding that can come out of it with the two rates, and how we can use that funding to support our water and waste straight, uh, treatment facility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Eisner, fifteen fifteen Riverside Drive. Um, one thing I've not heard, we've had a situation with, um, security issues on water supply. And I have a website out and a lot of questions are coming at me as far as what the city is doing to, you know, keep, uh, cyber attacks at, at bay. So, if we could listen to a little bit, if we do have somewhat of a plan, I, I don't want it to be known if it's something kept private, but I would like to just know that something's in place, because that was the question that was posed to me. And, uh, if it has to be something done in private or explained to me in private, I'm happy to listen to it.
I'm going to answer that. Because it's a security concern.
I, I thought so.
We've already discussed that right now.
Yes. I, I didn't want that to go public, mayor. I just, it was a question posed to me, and I didn't have the answer. And I'd like to be able to provide the answer. So, it was, uh, you know, if it's private, that's fine. I'll, I'll respect.
Well, it's not private. It's just a, uh, a security concern.
Okay. No, I thought so. I thought so.
Thank you so much.
And I'll sign that now. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments, please? Again, I want to thank you for providing us different options. Um, uh, the local monthly bill survey indicates that our water average bill is a hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-seven cents, which is higher than the average water bill on the, you know, the other cities, which is the average is a hundred and one dollars and sixty-seven cents. Um, if we select the option four, by the two thousand and twenty-four, the water and sewer average bill would be a hundred and thirteen, which is lower than the average of a hundred and fifteen, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Projected average.
Well, the, um, we're still in the middle of, uh, pandemic, and our residents are facing, and I'm not, I'm saying that to my, uh, fellow commissioners, that many residents, they're facing economic difficulties. I support option number four, which is a two point two zero percent reduction for the first year, no increase for the two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four. And then on two thousand twenty-four, we can have another rate study and evaluate it again and see where we at before we decide. The reason I'm thinking of that is we're going to have a lot more customers the next three years. There are three subdivisions that come in. They will be developed in Tarpon Springs. I'm not sure how many customers are actually going to be, but I think it's going to be more revenue. So, I want, right now, to have a reduction for the first year, state, uh, no increase for two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four, and then reevaluate it again. That's what I would like to see, and I'd like to hear from, uh, my fellow commissioners, Vice Mayor Carr.
Thanks, Mayor. Is that option two you were talking about?
Four. This is the one that is two point two percent decrease?
It's two.
There's two options.
Two point two percent.
Okay. It's the rate reduction.
Depends which one you look at it, I guess, because we have a document here. It says option four.
Oh, okay. You're looking at the graph. Got it. Okay.
I'm looking at the graph.
Understand what you're saying. Okay. That makes sense. Okay. Thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions. Is it Andrew? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Andrew, thank you for your presentation. It was clear. The presentation was clear. It made sense. Um, I appreciate that. So, just from a, it sounds like you do a lot of studies throughout the state. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, is it common to see a water tax of the residents and then also see an interfund transfers as well on the water fund when you're doing these studies?
So, the, uh, interfund transfers are quite common for utility systems when they're publicly owned, because if they were privately owned, they would be staffed with their own human resources, legal defuncions, IT departments, et cetera. So, generally speaking, they would have to cover those types of centralized costs, plus have payments, uh, for taxes and franchise fees. If there was a privately owned utility, so as a public agency, it's very common to see allocations of indirect costs or payments in lieu of taxes or payments in lieu of franchise fees to the utility to recognize at least the central services costs that are housed within the general fund, to make sure those are fairly apportioned, as well as to recognize, um, the potential for lost tax revenue and franchise fee revenue. In addition, the five percent in Florida, the up to five percent tax on the water bills, uh, that's also very commonly used, uh, by communities. And most of the times, those revenues go to the general fund, um, consistent with other types of local options discretionary taxes. So, both are pretty common mechanisms in Florida and even throughout the country. Um, these types of mechanisms are very commonly used for public utilities.
I appreciate the details. So, I just want to make sure, uh, that both of them together are commonly used? Like, when you see taxes and interfund transfers, it's commonly used to see them both, right?
Yes. Yes. Both are commonly used together. And then what we do see are nuances in terms of what is the level of the utility tax? Will some go up to the full statutory amount or do less? And then similarly, on the transfers to the general fund, what components are they considering? Is it just central services allocations? Is it also payments in lieu of taxes or franchise fees? We've even seen some communities, um, utilize concepts of return on investment, um, to the general fund in addition to those general fund transfers. So, you know, I, I tend to look at the overall dollar amount, if you will, or the percentage. Um, in the past, we've even done benchmarking for the water management districts on these levels of transfers. And so, at
Okay.
Eight percent, you're definitely on the lower side.
Eight percent's on the lower side for the interfund transfer?
Yes.
Okay. And that's just based on industry that you've seen?
Yeah, this is, and the survey I'm referencing that we did was specifically for Florida agencies as well. So, generally, when you take the indirect cost allocations and these other things, it's
Is that something you have that you could provide there, Ron, at all?
Uh, it's, it's a little bit dated. We did that a few years ago, so I'd be happy to provide the tech memo. It was for the St. John's Water, uh, Management District. So, but we also have information of other communities locally that's more current, that may be of interest, that
Yeah, no, I mean, I would be interested in
It's publicly available information, so we'd be happy to provide it.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be great, just to have a little more information on my end. Um, how much, I can't remember. How much did this study cost?
How much, I can't remember, how much did this study cost?
I think in round numbers, the study cost was about twenty five thousand. And this is again done every three years.
Got it. Okay.
So current, current practice.
Yep. Okay. Thank you very much. So if, let me ask a question. So we have our own water plant, which is a reverse osmosis plant. It's been award winning multiple times. We've got a great staff that runs it and I appreciate you guys, everything you're doing. I did send an article, I think, to, geez, to Mr. Smith sometime ago about some enhancements and the purification process and the filters that we potentially could use. I forget the technical name for it. Does, do these studies look at technology enhancements where they become potentially more affordable because of the enhancement in technology? Or are we just looking at our current projection on capital expenditures based on what staff has provided? Or just the wear and tear and et cetera?
So what our role is really looking at different capital spending scenarios. So I would say that to the extent that staff is evaluating different capital solutions or technologies in the plant that have trade offs, maybe it's more capital sooner, but it lowers certain operating costs. We would run those through the analysis to help evaluate the business case for those. But we don't proactively, I'm a financial specialist, not a engineer or plant specialist. So I tend to, you know, work with the information that's available and bring ideas to the table that we've seen with other communities and really defer to staff about what technologies make the most sense, given their knowledge of the systems.
Okay.
But we're happy to evaluate those as part of the process. In fact, we regularly do.
When you did the presentation with a comparison of the different cities, how you're projecting Tarpon, or currently Tarpon's above the average, and then Tarpon would be about the average if we went with option one, option two, that would be below the average in three years from now. How does Pinellas County and this area reflect to like the rest of the state that you've seen, out of curiosity?
In terms of the dollar amount of the bills or just the level of increase in fees? I'd say they're generally speaking, this is at six and a half thousand gallons, pretty comparable. If you go to certain pockets of the state, particularly South Florida, you'll see some higher increases. Northeast Florida, it's a lot of groundwater and so it tends to be low cost treatment technologies. So Northeast Florida tends to be a little less expensive. Central Florida is kind of a bit of a mix. When you average things out, I'd say the Tampa area is kind of a good reflection of the state's average costs. But you've got kind of certain higher cost pockets in South Florida and then Northeast Florida, just because of the groundwater supply sources there. It's generally a little bit lower cost in Northern Florida.
Okay. That makes sense. And then I guess this question would go to the city manager. This went to the budget advisory committee, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, was there a recommendation made out of that committee?
No, because we had told them that tonight was for you to discuss this. They looked at the methodology and what was done and we'll be meeting every week on the budget, every Thursday on the budget and stuff. So we were waiting to see what the commission came out of this and then we're going to bring back, because there'll be another vote, there'll be another meeting on this and a vote. This is a discussion item for you to give us any information or anything else to give. When you give the direction on which way you're going, we would bring that back to them to get the actual endorsement.
Okay.
They did look at this in depth the last time that they did it, so they are aware of this methodology because they did look at it eighteen or whenever it was when, when we had did. A lot of the members are still on there and stuff, so. But again, they were going to wait the recommendation to see what this board decided to go with and any changes or anything you were going to ask for additional. And then they would make a recommendation.
Okay.
Because this is coming back.
Okay, so this is just, we're not voting on an option tonight. We're just making, we're making a recommendation, am I understanding?
Giving us direction of what other information do and what you're leaning towards that we would bring back to you for a formal vote.
So one of the things that, it's interesting that we had a study done three years ago. I think I was on the board at that point because we adopted the rates over ten years. And this study that has come out now, it says we're allowed, or we're financially viable, able to freeze rates or even drop rates for three years and still be able to do what we want to do, which leads to what the mayor said earlier, that we potentially could have more funds coming in with more developments, car washes, et cetera. Is that something during your calculation that you looked at that we're going to have more people in Tarpon Springs and more users as we move on further along the life cycle of our water plant?
Yeah, we did factor in higher growth assumptions, as I mentioned in the last study, seventy five new accounts per year. And that's consistent with Bieber projections from the University of Florida. Sometimes we'll run sensitivities if we have development specific information to try to do that. Oftentimes, you know, I haven't run into a developer that doesn't have the best project yet that will be done tomorrow. So we have to, we have to measure those in terms of how we incorporate and evaluate those. So we felt more comfortable with Bieber. And then to the extent that higher growth does come in, it goes right to your point in that we may see slightly higher fund balances, slightly higher revenues, which means in that next conversation, we may not have to have the indexing adjustments that we're seeing, all else being equal, which all else may very well likely not be equal at that point.
Okay. So if we have like a couple of disasters that just happened, for whatever reason, I don't know, the water plant or big mains that break that would have impacts into the funds, we have emergency funds within the water fund to address those. So would that then impact the water fees at the next study? Am I, is that would be correct?
Yeah, so if you were to have those types of unanticipated capital improvements or, you know, emergency situations that required the use of funds beyond what we have projected, it would mean you'd have to make some decisions and adjustments. Either it would mean replenishing those reserves later or potentially deferring other projects to make up for those impacts. So there may be, or leveraging other funding sources to the extent they may be available. So you would have to make some adjustment to accommodate that, that type of a circumstance.
Okay. So I mean, historically for myself, I haven't been comfortable yet with the interfund transfers on how they're set up with the total dollar amount. And I, maybe I just need to ask more questions to our finance department and city manager to understand how many FTEs that they expect are utilized and dedicated to the water plant. So I do have some concerns on that. You were saying it's a state, it's normalized throughout the state with the interfund transfers and taxes. To me, I think the fund, the general fund, we should do it through adblock taxes and not through the water fund, myself. Doesn't matter what the other cities are doing or other parts of the states are doing, I just don't think that's the right way to go. I think transparency is best for the residents. If we're billing them for water, we should go ahead and just charge them only for water, but not for administrative fees that we're using these same individuals and other departments throughout the city. So that's just personally how I feel. It sounds like that's a different approach throughout the state, based on what you said and your expertise. So I'm leaning on that tonight. I would like to have a little more discussion on that. Between option one and option two, Mayor brought up a good point about this year with people being impacted with COVID, revenues, et cetera, at different businesses. I have no problem with decreasing it this year and then freezing it for two years and then reevaluating it in twenty four, twenty five to see what that looks like. I do see though, obviously, that it does shoot up an extra seven dollars projected. But I mean, how many, that's going to be three different studies away from now? And that could change, just like this, this year's changed, right, from nineteen, twenty eighteen? So I would be in support of option two tonight as well. It doesn't mean I can't find a blend between the two if we need to. But I also would like to look a little bit further into the interfund transfers and the taxes. I still think there's some areas for improvement, just from a visibility standpoint. And maybe we just put that on our water bills to have some clarification. I'm not really sure what that looks like. But overall, I'm looking to hear for some additional information from the budget advisory committee as well, from some recommendations. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, in regards to transfers, it's more of a policy that's got nothing to do with the rate. It's just a policy.
Yeah.
That we need to establish. Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for being here tonight, presenting this to us. Always good to look ahead. So I was looking at the fiscal year twenty twenty four rate survey, the projected one. And I see, you know, what kind of the options that we're working with. But what assumptions were you making about the other cities for fiscal year twenty twenty four? Was it just a steady increase based on what they previously had or?
So for each of the communities, it was a little bit different. So for Gulfport, for instance, we do annual reviews for that community. So we have insights to the planned increases from the last study we did last year that's being updated now. So those were the basis of the forecast assumptions for Gulfport. Similarly, for Safety Harbor, they have an approved plan of increases. I believe that extends for another couple of years, I think at six and a half percent per year. So it's an approved ordinance in that case for Safety Harbor. Clearwater has an approved ordinance with increases of four percent per year. I think the last one ends next year, but the current projection is for that to continue. So that was included in the forecast, a steady four percent increase. Dunedin just approved a six percent increase, I believe it was, through fiscal twenty six. So that's improved in their ordinance. So many of these communities have approved multi-year ordinances. Pinellas County has increases approved through fiscal year twenty three, one percent for water, nine and a half percent for sewer. And then from the last study that we did for them, we used the projections for twenty four at this point, knowing that they'll conduct an update in the future. So for many of these increases, you're hearing a theme, approved increases, multi-year plans identified. Hillsborough County just approved a three-year plan of four percent annual increases. So that was the basis of their escalation factor. Newport Ritchie has a four percent automatic annual increase in their rates. It happens every year unless their council takes action otherwise and they pass through any increasing costs from Tampa Bay Water on top of that. Pasco County has an approved multi-year rate plan, one and a half percent for water, three and a half percent for sewer. They're looking at establishing a new plan, a new four-year plan at this point. That looks to be pretty consistent with what we had in the prior study. City of Tampa just approved a twenty-year rate plan a couple of years ago. That was one of the longest term rate plans that I've seen. And that was a result of completing all their master plans for their infrastructure. So they identified all their capital needs and then they dedicated the commitment to the funding side. And so they actually have, I think, about seventeen or eighteen years left on that twenty-year rate plan. So those were included here. The only ones that I didn't have that type of information for were really just Largo and Oldsmar. They tend to do things year to year and we just don't work with those two communities. So we had to make CPI assumptions for those is what we did, just two or three percent per year. So most of the others are very current, solid approved plans was the basis of that. So it's a projected survey. We need to take that with a grain of salt because even approved rates can be modified as you've evidenced, but it's the best information that we have available.
We need to use you as a consultant more often. That was a great answer. Thank you very much. Glad we're using the real time, actual rates from other cities rather than just, you know, calculations. For option one and two, it mentions or emphasizes that they don't require any new debt to be taken on. Does that imply that deviating from these two options may create new debt?
Yeah, for both of these options, it goes back to the public comment that was made relative to the funding resources. We wanted to make sure that a lot of the elements in the capital improvement program were renewal and replacement items, recurring annual needs. And so we want to make sure that we had cash funding for those resources that were those program needs, if you will, that were identified. And so both of these plans would, if we were to make changes from them and not adjust the capital spending, then we would have to find other sources of funds for the same project needs. So to answer your question, yes, if we deviated from the rate plans, we would have to borrow unless we modified the capital plans.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, just for consensus building, I mean, normally I'd go with the more long-term, more long-term return on investment here. But if this is something we're going to look at in a few years anyway, then why not go with the more immediate option? So I also support option two, the rate reduction.
Commissioner Tiqueros?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Mr. Herring talks fast and he does that as a CFO and I didn't quite catch your name.
Andrew Burnham.
Burnham?
Yes.
Burnham. Mr. Burnham, you saw my memorandum, I would hope.
I did, yes, sir.
You, just off the top, you know, I'm familiar with how these studies go and everything. And sometimes I always wonder whether we always ask the right question in things. And for example, we seem to be hung up, and I had a conversation with Mr. Herring and Mr. Smith about this. We seem to be hung up on where we stand with other communities and we use that as a goal. And for example, Tampa, Tampa, the city of Tampa gets their water from the Hillsborough River, at least a good portion of it. There's no way we can ever compete with that unless we pull water out of the Anclou River. So I'm not sure that that's a good standard or goal that we should pursue. But, but just as far as a question goes, why aren't we below average?
Well, I think there's a number of factors and I fully appreciate the comments you made about the survey because these are really snapshots in time. And so where we are in our journey as a utility and state of maturity and investment in water supplies that could serve multiple generations, other communities may not be there. And they might not be there on their infrastructure spending plans for renewal and replacement where the city has been. We're in a pretty steady state of reinvestment for its underground infrastructure. So I think there's a difference in terms of when communities are addressing this. So while Tampa may never rise to the same level, they did not have the planning done to do the renewal and replacement needs identified in these capital plans previously. So they really weren't planning to do that type of renewal and replacement, but now they are. And now we're going to see steady increases in their rates over time. So if you fast forward in the future, we may not be the same, but I bet we're going to be a lot closer than we are today. So timing is very important on these communities. Also, another component is the rate structure itself. So if you were to run these surveys at different amounts of typical volumes, you would see different results because some communities have different inclining block rate structures or fixed charges. So if you were to run this at a low volume bill, the results may be different, or a higher volume bill, because communities will use the rate structure to really reflect some of their policies about maybe affordability or fixed cost recovery and have higher fixed charges. Or maybe they want to provide a very strong conservation incentive. So they have very low indoor rates, but very high rates for outdoor use and conservation. So rate structure also plays a very big part in these surveys, in addition to the timing components. And then some communities, it's also funding. What are the funding sources they use for the utilities? So St. Pete recently had been redirecting or using some of their local option sales tax to accelerate underground infrastructure for sewer inflow and infiltration, nine million a year. So they were supplementing just utility rates to fund their capital program. And so some communities have done that too, in terms of looking at alternative funding sources. So there's, there's a whole host of differences and I didn't even get into things like system density that also come into play and topography. So there's just a whole host of variables that make this harder to really rely on in setting rates. I really would advise against that. It's more for having an awareness of what are other agencies around you charging, to have that understanding as part of your decision-making process.
You were saying, don't, don't get into the rate structure itself. Is that what you just said or?
I would, I would certainly advise against setting your rates solely based on surveys, is what I'm trying to say. I would not.
Oh, no, no, I agree with that. Yeah, I mean, I, I, you're right. But do we have a conservation incentive built in? We used to at one point and it was always problematic and we do have that now?
You still do have an inclining block rate structure, if I remember correctly. And I was going to look at the tiers because I should have them here. So you do have a six-tier structure at present. They go in increments of five thousand gallons. And so that rate will go up progressively from what's in the first tier at four thirty eight and then it goes up to in the top tiers, you know, seventeen dollars or twenty one dollars a thousand. So it's still a very, you know, strong conservation pricing, but also, you know, affordability creating rate structure for the lower volume uses.
Is part of the rate sufficiency analysis or is it a different study? Is there something, do we look at, or do you look at things that we could do differently to lower the rates?
So.
You know, in terms of your scope and, I mean, could that be another study or was this part of this study?
So that would be really, I think, a different analysis that we would, if you wanted us to help look for, you know, efficiency opportunities, you know, whether it's energy savings or, you know, automation or technology projects. As I was kind of mentioning before, you know, we work with staff to run through the current ideas that they have and I'll mention things that we've seen with other communities. But to, to study that and to identify areas of opportunity, I definitely want to bring in some colleagues that have that really subject matter expertise and technical knowledge of plants to see if that would be, you know, of value and of assistance. But I don't know if that's already been done or not, so that would be something else to ask.
I've not heard that we've, I've not, I don't know that we've done that. But and this kind of gets me into the next thing. It's interesting. I mean, I can tell you what I'm going to be doing tomorrow and next week, but next month and six months from now, it gets a little foggy. And when we started projecting out ten years, I kind of wonder whether that's really a worthwhile analysis. I know it has to be done, but whether we should hang our hats too much on it. And, and really residents, I believe, are looking at it in terms of now. What can you do for me now? Not, you know, it's interesting that in twenty twenty four, I'll be below average, but why aren't we below average now? That sort of thing. And I think that as a commission, we should do everything possible to satisfy that interest and that desire on the part of the commission. And if there are any other types of studies, there's the one I just asked you about, that would be helpful in that regard. I would certainly like for that to be some kind of a recommendation as part of this report or some other, you know, avenue that you might have as a consultant to provide us. I know there's ways of saving costs and that's going to be a question that's going to go unanswered, at least tonight. The, the, your graphs that you go, that you have, when you go out ten years, you've got it down, but the one with, it's the four graphs on there, the four colored but the one with, it's the four graphs on there, the four colored ones. When you do your analysis, do you, is it something that, from a study, is it the entire 10-year period, or is there somewhat of a focus on the near term? And what I'm getting at, in other words, are you overly conservative in the assumptions and that sort of thing? I know many of the assumptions are provided to you by the staff. I've had that conversation. But are you overly conservative in the assumptions so that it kind of smooths things out so that you're sure that 10 years from now or eight years from now, you're going to have enough funds to cover the capital projects and the other operation maintenance that the staff is telling you that they have in mind to do?
Sure. Appreciate the question. So when we, initially, when we've been doing our financial modeling, we really focused on the first five years of the forecast period, but we had an interesting lesson learned with a community that had a big water treatment plant sitting in year six. So we're just focusing on years one through five, you know, we really missed an opportunity to do advanced planning to kind of start to build up to the funding needs for that big project that was in year six. So we took our models to 10 years, and that was also helpful for communities that started doing 10-year capital plans, so that as they had those capital plans, and if they showed a ramp up in those future expenses, you would be able to have that awareness into your current decision-making process and to take that into consideration. And so that's really why we've kind of evolved to that 10-year forecast, is to make sure that we're being mindful of our future capital needs and have that in perspective when we're evaluating those immediate and short-term decisions, because we want to understand their consequences.
But for Tarpon Springs, is that really useful? I mean, I know other cities maybe find that more, larger cities, more capital-intensive cities, for example, well, just the larger cities, but for something the size of Tarpon Springs where our production is about half-capacity right now, we've got plenty of capacity in our plants and things like that, is that something that's really realistic?
You know, I think looking at the 10 years is a good exercise, but from a rate-setting and planning perspective, I think looking at that shorter-term horizon makes a lot of sense, because there are a lot of things that can and will change as you move forward in time. There are many positive indicators, though, from the past practice of setting the rate plans that you did, thinking about when you did the RO plant and had to secure the debt, the fact that you had a 10-year rate plan gave a lot of assurance to investors about proactive final management, financial management and commitment to funding the infrastructure. So I think it served its purpose at that point in time, but I think that planning horizon is something that really should shift and be flexible, because we've in past years had wastewater plant expenses that were sitting just in year eight, right outside of that immediate planning cycle that we needed to consider as part of the planning process. So there, probably an eight-year look would have been really good. But I think now, to your point, the, looking at the capital improvement program, it's looking more stable, it's looking more renewal and replacement oriented, and I think a five-year focus is good. To your point about the assumptions, you know, this is a scenario here, every community is different, about the level of conservatism that they would like to place in their forecast assumptions. Going through this analysis and this study, we are smack in the middle. I would say we have an equally greater chance of being over these expenditure projections than we do as being under.
Okay.
So we are right in the middle. And so I'm probably a little bit conservative by nature. I'm a tad uncomfortable about the capital spending assumptions that are in here in the out-years. With the recent inflation and increases in commodity costs, I think that's a risk. But to the point of updating this periodically, knowing the current resources that we have, you know, I think it's a risk that can be managed. And if those capital costs do come up because of inflation, you'll be able to respond to it quickly, and you won't have to have a rate spike. You'd be able, you'd be able to take it into account in your planning. So I know this is a long-winded answer and potentially not as direct as you'd like it to be, but I hope it's responsive.
No, and that leads to my next question, as far as the period of the studies. You mentioned Gulfport, and it does an annual review. Can you describe that, and why do they do an annual review?
Sure. So many communities, Gulfport's a good example, so is Clearwater. Clearwater is maybe even a better. They'll adopt a multi-year plan, and they'll usually do a five-year plan. Pinellas will do four, but they'll come back and look at it each year to make sure that they're on track with their plan, because they have more moving parts and more volatility. And so changes in funding sources, if they have lower levels of reserves and they're closer to the margin where an unanticipated occurrence can cause them to really come off their plan, they need to stay on top of it. And so they'll do those reviews annually to make sure that they're keeping rates as low as possible, reflecting the most current information that they have in each year as they make their budgets. Clearwater takes a little bit longer-term perspective, and they do annual updates every year, but they approve a five-year plan. But what they'll do is, I kind of refer to it as almost a health check. It's just a quick update of the model, run the numbers, make sure everything's good, and if that's the case, that's it. There's nothing there. But if things have changed, and we need to talk about amending the rate plan, up or down, based on changes in circumstances, then that would move to additional conversations, public meetings, and considering of alternative options if things have changed. And so that's kind of a hybrid approach.
No, and that's the thing. If we wanted to keep the rates as low as possible, which gets us into this moment of now, you know, in other words, now, would, obviously, we would benefit from an annual review. Okay.
Yeah, and it would make the cost a little bit less, too, on the annual reviews. They wouldn't be the same as what this would be.
Yeah, I was going to ask you about that, right.
We had to update a few years of data when we did.
Would it be a five-year contract then, or something along that line?
It could be however you'd prefer to set it up. You know, I defer to you and your staff about that.
Typical, how much would that?
So, I mean, generally, if it's the quick updates, it would be maybe in the $15,000 ballpark. And then if we needed to do a full presentation, in-depth analysis, talk about options like this, that would be, you know, more like the cost of this study.
All right. You answered the question as far as the conservatism. That's all my questions. You know, in terms of, and also agree with Vice Mayor Carr as far as the transfers and the other things, but I think that needs to be general fund-centered rather than the water and sewer fund. But I agree, you, I think if you saw my memorandum, you saw my comment concerning the general fund, everything kind of gets fed into that any way it can to pay for things. But again, residents are interested. I don't have a problem with a two-point, the option 2 for tonight, because I don't want to approve something that is really nowhere. In other words, I think that was a little bit, at least the sense I got three years ago. So I don't have an issue with that. But I really think that we need to kind of adopt a different strategy here to keep the cost as low as possible. And I didn't know about Gulfport, so I appreciate you just, you know, offering that, actually accidentally, but it's something I picked up on. I really think we should pursue something with a much shorter risk horizon and do these annual updates to make sure that our costs are as low as possible to our residents. I think anytime we extend it beyond that, this is when you have to be more and more conservative, and when you become more and more conservative, the residents pay for that with a higher rate, which may be needed or maybe it's not needed. But if we've got that short horizon, we can kind of guarantee them the lowest possible rate that we can. So that would be, in addition, that would be an additional recommendation that I would have, is to perhaps go back and look at what the costs are to do this annually, at maybe hopefully at around $15,000 a year, and adopt a different strategy for our water and sewer rates, and one that its goal is to keep the annual rates as low as possible and the increases as low as possible as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, we need to give a clear direction to the city manager. My recommendation is to, as I said earlier, do you adopt the option 2, which is to have a 2.2 reduction for the first year, and then for 2023 and 2024 will be no increase. And then we evaluate, we have another analysis and see which way we need to go. Right now, many people have a difficult time, economic difficulties, so I think it's time to, this is an opportunity to reduce the water bill.
Mayor, I have one more question for Andrew.
Go ahead.
There is a resident that kept bringing up about refinancing the debt of the water plant. If the federal government did XYZ, I don't remember what that was or anything along those lines. Have you heard anything like that, or if there's a favorable opportunity, potential in the future, to refinance the debt to make it, the payment smaller, I suppose?
Yeah, I might defer that one to your finance director. I think those were 2013 bonds, if I remember right. So I don't know if you've got the ability to do that just yet.
Yeah, you are correct. They come up for call in 10 years from the 2013, so 2023, I have reached out to our financial advisor just to start getting them, to start thinking about it, if we wanted to try to, and hopefully if the interest rates stay low, but I know for my interest earnings, I'd rather see them higher and stuff. But yeah, we are starting to look into that to see if we could, you know, start looking into doing a rate reduction from our 3.59%.
Okay. So I mean, if we do have a debt that is less, then that potentially could decrease the water rate then potentially as well. Potentially, I guess, is the best way of saying it.
Yeah, and that, that's a, you know, for communities like St. Petersburg, that they have a significant amount of outstanding debt, that's, I think, part of the reason they look at annual updates as well, because they constantly do refinancings. At least they have in the last few years, and so they factor in those savings into their rate calculations.
Okay.
We need to give a clear direction to Mr. Lecoura, so if we have a motion to do that.
Mayor, I have a question for you.
Yes.
I'm not sure I understand. If we can do a rate, a type of rate annually for $15,000 a year to keep the rates as low as possible to the residents, why do we want to do one every three years? I mean, if Gulfport's doing it for that exact reason, which I would think that we're pretty much closer to the size of Gulfport than anywhere else, why wouldn't we want to adopt that strategy, or at least look into it a little further, rather than saying that we're going to do something in three years?
You say 15, and I thought was 20, wasn't it? What is the charges for the analysis?
So the, and this is just round numbers. So for this current study, it was about $25,000, and we've done this every three years or periodically. It hasn't been as frequent as annual. So we had some additional data to update, whereas annual updates, if it was just doing the modeling and setting up the conversation for you, that would be more along the lines of that $15,000.
Do you think the data will change enough to do that every year?
That's the part that gets interesting, you know. The part that I'm concerned about in the immediate term is the inflation risk and pressure on contracts. We've seen a lot of construction cost going up. So that's an interesting dynamic. The other one that's also interesting are federal funding bills that are being considered for water infrastructure. And so there could be changes in the next, in the near term, maybe more so than in the future, along those lines, that are probably two big concerns that I would strongly suggest you consider.
Would the annual review help that better to flesh that out?
You'd be able to incorporate those. So as you know, the changes in the federal bills that are happening in terms of infrastructure funding and programs, or the refunding opportunities, just be able to count those.
My point is, the revenues, our revenues for the water and sewer plant, if I'm not mistaken, are larger than what we've got for the general fund. I think they're $18 million. I'm not sure what $15,000 a year to guarantee the lowest rates.
You keep saying 15, you say 25.
Pardon me?
You keep saying 15, but he says 25.
No, the annual, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Burnham.
Yeah, no, the, doing this every three years, it's about that $25,000. But to do this annually, we wouldn't have to update three years of data every time we did this. So each year, it would be a more modest cost, and I was estimating about $15,000 if we did it each year, because we wouldn't be having to do so much data updates in one fell swoop.
Okay. I don't have a problem with doing that, as long as we, as long as we have a 2.2% reduction the first year.
Of course.
And stay with no increase on 2023 and '24.
I don't have an issue with that. All I'm saying is that if we do it annually, just for a few years to see how it's going, and then we can change that for whatever reason. But I think at this point, I'm hearing that we're right in the middle of the conservative kind of range as compared to other governmental agencies. I think the fact that we're out 10 years is costing the residents, because we're tending to be a little more conservative. And I think that Gulfport, at least their objective is to guarantee, to ensure to the residents that the rates are as low as possible. And that's, and I'm sure they didn't come up with that scheme. I'm sure as a rate consultant, you probably recommended that to them. If that's your objective, that's your goal, that's what we would recommend or how to proceed. And I think my sense of the residents, they're looking for things now, not whether we're going to be below the average 10 years from now or five years from now. So I, that's the only comment I'd like to make, that I think they would be more in tune with the residents, so.
Yeah, I agree with that, as long as we get, you know, the reduction and stay the same the next two years after that. Can we have a motion?
Yeah, can I just make one more comment? I'm fine with hearing what one year biannually and then three years the cost is. I mean, we could give it to the budget advisory board, too, which is really different between one year and two years. I'm happy for these studies, they don't cost a significant amount of money. The other one that you brought up, too, was a study about the operation of the plant. I have full confidence that our team does an awesome job, that they're top in the state. But if there's an opportunity to do some type of study for reducing costs somehow, I don't know what that would look like. We do that in my work, I'm familiar with it. It's nothing to do saying that we don't have full confidence in all of our staff. But I would like to have an idea what that would cost and what opportunities potentially there could be as well, so we potentially could task the city manager to find some more information on about that, too. I think that would be good. So, I mean, I would, I would make a motion, okay, so we're not making a motion to approve the water rates, we're making a motion for a recommendation. Good to go back to the budget advisory board, I just need some clarification here on what we're actually making a motion for, from somebody.
From a legal perspective, I would just say, this is the same as before. This is a presentation, it's an update, so you're just going to give a consensus in some sort of direction to the city manager that he can take back to the budget advisory committee, so that they can go ahead and take your consensus into consideration when they make their official recommendation to this board.
Okay. So can I, so in this aspect, option 2 seems like that's the biggest one with the reduction and then the freeze. And then the studies, options of one, two, or three years as an option with preferring having it to be every year, and then also with an option of what the cost would be to do a operational study for cost reductions.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yes. And I understand.
I'll second that. Okay.
Oh, we don't need, we're not doing a motion. Okay, got it. Does everybody agree with that, I guess?
Yeah, everyone nodded, yeah.
Well, let's vote on it, then.
He's got consensus. I think we're good with option 2, looking into the...
Well, we can do a consensus, but also, it was a point that we made during the work session of the rules and regulations, to preferring go with the, you know, with a vote instead of consensus.
Why don't you make a motion, Vice Mayor Carr?
Yeah, I'm happy to make a motion, what we're stating.
That was part of the...
No, I agree. I don't like consensus.
So we've got to do that.
Vice Mayor Carr?
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Burnham, thank you so much.
You're quite welcome. Thanks for the engaging discussion and good questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to take five minutes recess, and we'll be back. We're going to take five minutes recess, and we'll be back. Now reconvene the BOC meeting at 9:20 PM, and we go to the consent agenda, the item number four is the attorney fees, Johnson &amp; Johnson, the invoice 77, 86, number five is the special events, Fourth of July, Independence Day celebration, B is the Fourth of July picnic, C is the Sunset Beach Concert Series, June through November 2021, D is the Tarpon Nuts Welcome Back Concert, August 14, 2021, E is Rotary Triathlon, September 11, 2021. Number six is ratify the increase to file number 210081, CAM Routine Manus and Repairs for Maintaining the Highway Lights Lighting System, Florida Department of Transportation Contract Number E2Z74RO. Number seven is the increase file number 200076BJL Chemicals for the Reverse Asmosis Water Plant, and the number eight is the increase file number 190139, CCM Utility Call Center Support Services Utility Billing Florida Municipal Power Agency, RFP Number 2018-214. Any of these items that you'd like to pull?
Just a couple comments.
Okay, are there any public comments on these items, items four through eight?
Are we definitely having a Fourth of July fireworks display at Sunset Beach?
That's where we pass in it.
Okay.
Are there any public comments on these items? See none. Are there any commission comments, Vice Mayor, you say you had a comment to make?
Yeah, I just have a couple comments. Fourth of July is one of my favorite holidays, a lot to celebrate as America of our freedoms, I just wanted to point that out, we also have a couple great events as well, the Rotary Triathlon, and then the Sunset Beach Concert starting back up as well, it's great to see some of these events start coming back through the approval process and the consent agenda, always looking forward to celebrate as a community and as a city for our Fourth of July independence, so, thank you.
Any other comments?
I'd like to comment on the Fourth of July fireworks, I want to thank the city manager and staff for getting this thing under contract before Christmas or whenever, given that we were going to be coming out of COVID and not waiting until we came out of COVID to try and get a Fourth of July fireworks display, so I think that was something that the commission pushed to do early on, and I'm glad that you followed through that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also like to comment on the Fourth of July picnic, Mr. Licorius, you're going to have all the activities for the youth, as we do every year?
We're going to have them, we're going to try to expand them because of losing last year, so we're hoping to expand them as much as we can, so hopefully it'll be the biggest and best one that we've had.
Good, because the kids are having a lot of fun with that.
We're going to try to make it better to make up for the lost time.
Thank you. The chair will detain the motion.
Motion. Second.
And roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes, thank you. And now we go into the special consent agenda, item number nine is to authorize execution of interlocal agreement with Pinellas County for distribution of potential addition five cents local option tax, fuel tax. Mr. Licorius, you want to present this item?
Yes, the only thing that's changed, obviously, you know, we didn't have a full board, the mayor was not at the meeting where this, where this came up, a question came up about our availability of getting the money if we did not vote to approve this, and some other cities asked that question between the last meeting and this meeting, and we were told by the county that we would still get the money, so if you decide to go diff, to not approve signing this, and again, signing this only is signing that the city gets the increase if it is passed by the county, and county's pretty much going to pass it, they just needed 50% of the big cities, I think you've got in the backup the numbers, St. Pete's, the Clear Waters, you know, it was all approved, so probably it's got 80% of the population, so it's approved by enough for the county to go forward, now they still have to decide the one to five cents, and what you're signing is just to accept our portion of the money if it passes, but if on principle, like you see some other cities, especially some of the smaller beach cities, if on principle, it was pretty clear last time from the four board members that were here, that they didn't, they didn't like the tax on the residents that time, and wanted to compose a letter to be sent on that, so, so this becomes a little bit of a different issue, that we're not, you know, giving up the due funding for, for our roads and streets and sidewalks if we turn this thing down, so that may influence your decision on what you want to set, but pretty much with the majority of the cities and the population, and you see the votes on it going forward with it, the county's going to go forward again, you don't know what the degree of one to five percent is going to be, I imagine from the report of the county and the county administrator, it's going to be more towards the five than the one, so that's the additional information for your, for your vote tonight that's different from the last meeting, and I know you, you knew everything was on the last meeting, Mayor, because you watched it and studied it, so I know I don't need to update you on the last meeting, because you have studied it, so.
Yes, we're going to go to public comments, are there, do we have any public comments on this item? See none, the chair will detain the motion.
I'm going to move to sign a contract, I mean, I appreciate what the city manager's saying, but, you know, I just think it's better to have something in writing as far as some, you know, just to memorialize the agreement, again, I'm not endorsing the tax, but I'm endorsing us getting our part of the money.
Do we have a second?
Second for discussion purposes.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, and second, I am not in favor to propose any fuel tax increase, as a matter of fact, I would like to propose to decrease the property tax, the mileage for 2021, 2022, so I'm not in favor of increasing any taxes. The last meeting, as Mr. Licorius had stated, that it was a tie vote, so we couldn't decide, I hope tonight we'll be able to do that. I agree that we should send a letter to the county commissioner stating our opposition to increase of the local option fuel tax, and I believe that was, it was the vice mayor who suggested that, so I'm in favor of doing that, but I will vote yes for this resolution, not because I support the fuel tax, I'm not, but only so the city can benefit and receive the addition revenue, we got to, I agree with Commissioner Vaticiotes, we need to sign the contract and make sure that we received our, our revenue in, if the proposed increase will pass, so that's my, my position on that. Vice Mayor, do you want to comment?
Yeah, I just want, need some clarification, based on, I think, the county administrator replying to the mayor of Dunedin, cities that do not approve the ILA will still receive their share of new tax revenue, as long as some variation of cities approvals, representing a majority of incorporated population happens by June 1st, so even if we don't approve it tonight and sign the contract, the city would still receive whatever the county approves, based on whatever reading on this, on this one, so, am I misunderstanding that, or am I?
No, but I emphasize that's what he says, but that's not in writing.
No, no, Mayor, I've got, just, I have some experience with the county, I mean, from way back, and it's better to have it in writing, I promise you that, if things changed, we have nothing in writing.
Because it's an agreement, you're saying?
Right, so.
It's a signed agreement.
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, we're not supporting the fuel tax increase, we only want to make sure that if it passes, we're going to get the money that the city can, is eligible to get.
Yeah, but isn't that part of the agreement, that we're agreeing that we approve the five percent tax?
No.
It's not, it's just for the payment?
I would support a letter, as the mayor does, that's a separate issue.
It's a separate issue, we'd do that anyway.
So we just need to have that signed, like tomorrow, basically, so it could get there, or they could be emailed, I guess, by the first, what's that, next Tuesday?
Commissioner Donovan, have a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I think it's pretty clear in the backup that we're going to get the money either way, and that's kind of conflicting for me, because I do feel hypocritical saying no to it, knowing in the back of my mind, if I say no or yes, they're still going to give me the money, but I still don't think we should support this, I mean, I understand it's the agreement, but it's just the principle of, they're not proposing an increase to the gas tax, they're basically completely duplicating it, they're creating an entirely separate new one, it's almost like they have the first one, and they said, wouldn't it be nice if we had another one of these, and then they create another one, that's essentially what's happening here, so I'm not in support of it, and I don't want to sign any agreement to it.
Okay. Commissioner Vaticiotes, any comments?
No, my comments stand, I'm not endorsing the tax, but I want to make sure we get our money, and I don't want there to be any questions between us and the county later, five years from now, or whenever things maybe change, the formula changes or something like that, and we don't have a leg to stand on, that's all.
Yeah. I would agree, I mean, I get it, I don't want the taxes, and so, do we need to?
We need to vote.
Do we need to go ahead and task the city manager to write this letter before us, or have Tricia do that for us also in the vote?
Yeah.
Okay, so, Commissioner Vaticiotes, I was going to ask for clarification on the motion, real quick.
Just to, I think it's the commission's desire, as I'm hearing it, the motion for me would be to sign the agreement, and then I think that the census from the commission, the majority anyway, is to send a letter as well, saying that we're not in support of the increase, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I, that would be my motion.
Okay, just for clarification, that is a second.
You'll do with a second?
Yeah, okay.
And Mayor, if I might?
Yes.
Just for clarification, the interlocal agreement is contained within your backup materials, and there is a provision with the attachment of Exhibit A to the interlocal agreement that says, any members, regardless of you sign and participate in the interlocal agreement, the funds will be distributed as per Exhibit A, so as long as the interlocal agreement passes and a majority of the population of Pinellas County agrees, and the larger cities do, whether or not you participate in the interlocal agreement, you will get the funds, and that is in writing within the interlocal agreement, so I just wanted for a legal clarification, the interlocal agreement does specifically state that.
So, may I ask the attorney a question?
Sure.
So, are you suggesting we don't need to sign the document?
I'm not suggesting anything, I just wanted to make sure that the commission had all the information, because the comment that was made, that you, was that you wanted to see something in writing, the interlocal agreement specifically states that all the municipalities within Pinellas County would be receiving a distribution if, in fact, the five percent tax is approved by a majority of the, the population of Pinellas County, so if Tarpon approves it and you sign the interlocal agreement, you're going to get the funds as long as, as long as the agreement passes as a whole, with all, with the majority of the communities participating.
Let me ask you a hypothetical, we've got an agreement based on population, we annex 40 acres to the east of us, two years from now, they're coded differently for the local auction sales taxes we would be, we've got an eternal auditor, we want to make sure we get those taxes, we've got something in writing now that's based on our population, we've annexed it in.
You have something that's based on a percentage of the population, so the Exhibit A specifically says that Tarpon Springs would receive 1.4%, 1.47% of whatever the revenues generated would be.
So what changes, the population or the percentage?
The percentage doesn't change, it's five percent allocate, it's the, it's the, it's the allocation of the five cent tax.
So if our population increases, we would get more money?
You would get 1.4%, yeah, to an extent, correct.
Okay.
I've got additional clarification questions, so, again, it doesn't matter if the city of Tarpon Springs signs an agreement, agreeing to the contract, it's in the exhibit that the city's going to get the funds.
As long as, and so this, this comes up in some of the smaller communities, and if you see on the list of the communities that have approved it and the communities that haven't, those that have not approved it, it could still mean that some of the larger communities approve it, and even though they're not entering into it, they'll still get the benefit of the five percent tax, but they are not approving, they're not participating in the interlocal agreement, so what, what Pinellas County has done is says, we want to put out this five percent tax, but. tax, but we need a majority, i- if some of the larger cities decide, we want to vote it, we want to get the interlocal agreement, it doesn't really matter what the rest of the communities do, as long as a majority of the population within Pinellas County votes to approve and enter into the interlocal agreement, regardless of what everyone else says. Now, if, if every community in Pinellas County says, we don't want it, then Pinellas County doesn't get to do it.
May I just offer an observation? The fact that we're kind of mired down in this thing, that speaks for having a signed contract by itself.
I will be, I would feel more comfortable, go ahead and sign it.
And?
There you go. So we have a, we have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticaris?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
No.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor, who is this?
Yes. Okay, we're now going to the item number 10, which is the strategic plan proposal review and selection. City manager, if you present this item?
Yes, Renee, would you present this for us with our guests?
Thank you, Renee Vincent, Planning Department Director. Following up on our brief discussion last meeting where this was deferred, the consultants, USF Institute of Government and Collaborative Labs have now submitted a combined proposal with both of them, you know, working together to produce a strategic plan for the city of Tarpon, City of Tarpon Springs. So with us here tonight is Angela Chris with University, USF Institute of Government, and Lori Hill from Collaborative Labs. Ms. Chris would like to just give a brief overview and then open the, the plan up for, the strategic plan up for discussion with the board and how we want to move forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Angela.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to present to you today. I just wanted to talk very briefly about our model and why we chose our model, and then I was just going to review the phases that are in the proposal very quickly, and then happy to entertain any questions. And so Lori is also here with me to assist. So one of the reasons that we came together is that I really think this provides the city with a very extensive participatory planning model, right? And the reason for doing that is that it really gives everyone a stake or a voice, and whether that's either in person or by representation. And so this model really looks at involving staff, employees, members of the community, government officials, interested citizens, and people from other agencies that are involved with city business. Could be schools, could be nonprofits, et cetera. In addition to that, we really felt that we have some great subject matter experts within the University of South Florida around some of the key deliverables, but SPC Collaborative Labs, really, their strength is convening. And so as you'll see in the proposal, through various sections of it, so if you start with Phase One, again, 1.1, I just want to kind of go through these quickly, but again, SPC would be really working with us on the strategic alignment workshop, and that's really making sure that we're starting all at the same place. We would conduct a kickoff and obviously work plan refinement to make sure that you as commissioners and the mayor are all on board with that. Communications outreach, we have heard a lot at your meetings and from citizens, that is something that we would work very closely with your staff to ensure that information is being disseminated. Again, we would want to do a citizen engagement session where SPC would facilitate, and this is really around kind of expectations and interactions of how the citizens can participate in the process. We would do a workshop or special session with you as the commission and mayors. We would conduct stakeholder interviews, and those stakeholder interviews are really looking at various different people, as I mentioned at the beginning, throughout the process. So obviously, all of you as elected officials would be interviewed as stakeholders. We also would have staff identify those citizens and individuals, as well as the commission and mayor will have an opportunity to provide names as well for key stakeholders. But again, this could be neighborhood associations, again, nonprofits or agencies that do interact quite a bit with the city. From there, we would be conducting a resident feedback survey, and again, this is really more of a SWOT analysis around the strengths and weaknesses and opportunities and threats to move the city forward. An employee survey, making sure that all employees, again, have the opportunity, conducting an employee focus group, community focus groups, we'll be doing two of those. So within Phase One, the community will have an opportunity in 1.4, 1.7, 1.10, and 1.11. So they'll have four different opportunities for their voice to be heard in Phase One. And then at the conclusion of Phase One, we would bring all that information back to you and report that out to you. And then the second phase is where I like to say, this is really where the work happens. And so that's where you begin to develop those goals. But it really is important that, once we start that process, we also have executive leadership at the table. And so what a lot of times we see is that you'll begin to develop those goals, but there's also a lot of operational items that occur in the objectives and the action items that we need information from staff on so that we can develop the language around those goals with your direction a little better. And so that's what 2.1, if you look, 2.1 and 2.3 are really the focus for you as leaders to kind of help with that vision. And then 2.2 and 2.4 is really the staff coming in behind and saying, these are those operational items that need to be included as part of this. And then a final report for internal review, and then obviously a final report to the commission. And we usually try to do two reports. One is a community report, and then one is a very lengthy data, kind of internal, internal document. We do make the community report ADA compliant. So I just wanted to kind of walk through that because I think that there were some questions, and so I just wanted to make sure that, I hope that helped a little bit, and then I don't know if Lori wants to add anything as well.
Yeah, I'd like to just add to your comments. Stakeholders, having what we call deep and wide, going deep and wide with your stakeholders is extremely important, and involving your leadership is also very important. We worked with a municipality on the east coast of Florida, and when we first started working with them, just as an example, they came to us and said, we don't understand because the police department, the fire department, aren't doing the strategic plan. And I asked them a very simple question. I said, were they involved in the planning? And they said, no, they didn't need to be. That's why they weren't doing the plan. They weren't asked anything, they got no feedback into it, they got, their voices weren't heard, so they were not doing the plan. So that's just why we recommend strongly that you include your leadership, you go deep and wide, you think about who can be there at the table, who can be, go through these surveys. That's why we're making these recommendations.
All right, so we're happy to entertain questions. We just thought it would be valuable to hear from both of us.
Thank you. Ms. Chris, we're going to go to public comments, so we'll come back to you if you want to.
Sure.
Okay. Are there any public comments on this item? Do we have any public comments on this item?
Planning Artis, 595 Peninsula Avenue. With the strategic planning and the comprehensive planning, I'm still confused about how they're both matched together. I did see in the, the report that they've encouraged citizen engagement. That's one of the very most important things we as a city have lacked big time on asking the citizens for strategic planning. All this stuff comes together from the sustainability, from the roads that need to be done, from the stormwater, from creating seawall down the future of Tarpon Springs, so it's very important. And I know we created this website with the citizen engagement. To me, it still looks a little bit outdated, like it's from the 90s. We got to clean it up a little bit, and maybe we might have to reach out to the people on Facebook, create a little link or two within the communities, and maybe we can ask them what's, how do they get the most social interaction from the citizens themselves? Because this is a five, 10, 15, 20-year process. It's not just your guys' issues to deal with, but issues for the city to develop through infrastructure and other important items in the history, so we can worry about making sure that this stuff is set in place for 40 to 50, 60 years down the road. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments on this item? Here none. Ms. Chris, have you ever, have you ever worked together, the USF and SPC, on projects like that before?
I don't think, well, not in this capacity. We have worked together before, but not specifically, I would say, this exact scope of work.
Yeah, that, I would agree with that, and we're leaning on each other's expertise on what we do, and we are facilitation experts, convening experts, and they are subject matter experts. And so we have worked individually with other organizations to do stuff like this, and we have worked, USF and St. Pete has a really tight partnership with a lot of other divisions and departments that we've done, so we feel very confident that we can, we can accomplish this.
I'm sure you're going to provide a good product to us. It's no question in my mind. Question that I have is, you have two entities, they, how are you going to be working together as a team, knowing that, you know, you have two different styles?
Yes.
You know, one is the facilitators and the others are the subject matter experts.
Yeah, absolutely. So the USF Institute of Government will be the lead entity, and we will subcontract with SPC Collaborative Labs. But again, we, we are the subject matter experts when it comes to the survey work and employee survey, but they really do a much better job than we do around convening and facilitation. Not that we can't do it, but I think after sitting through meetings and talking, we really felt that this was what was best for you, for the city, was to partner.
Okay. That was going to be my next question. We, we're going to sign a, an agreement. Who is going to be assigning the agreement, and who's going to be responsible for that?
Yes, so it would be with USF, Florida Institute of Government, and then we will subcontract with SPC Collaborative Labs.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
The other question that I have is, I'm sure that our planning director, Mrs. Vincent, needs to have a point of contact, so he's going to be dealing with Ms. Chris, is with you?
Yes, that is me.
Okay. And the other question that I'll ask is our planning director, Ms. Vincent, are you okay with the, with the timeline that they're providing to you?
Actually, yes, and that was one of the things that we, we tweaked a little bit over the last week or so, recognizing that, you know, we have a sitting commission, we have an election, and then we're going to have a, you know, could be a significantly different commission, we don't know what that will look like, but, so we wanted to be sensitive to the appropriate break in the process between Phase One and Phase Two, and how we, how we bring everybody to the table. So no, I'm very comfortable with the timeline as it's written.
That was my next question, because as Phase Two, you probably have different players involved.
Yes, and we're aware of that, and we did work on the timeline, and I think we, one of the things that we did discuss was making sure that whomever the new commission is has all the documentation from Phase One and has an opportunity, almost pre-work, if you will, prior to the first time we convene for the leadership forum.
Okay.
The other thing that we wanted to ensure was that really between Thanksgiving and Epiphany, we kind of, you know, pulled out any community meetings and things like that. It's just such a busy time of year for this community and for, for the public, so we didn't want to try to have a community workshop in the middle of that time period. So you'll see some kind of breaks. Employee workshops and things like that can certainly continue, but we wanted to give the public a break during that time period in the process.
Good, thank you. Thank you for answering my questions. Vice Mayor Carr?
Just a couple of comments. I think it's a pretty unique situation. It sounds like you both are in a new kind of territory, and you're bringing your powers together and collaborating, so I'm encouraged by that, and I think it's a great opportunity for the city of Tarpon Springs to work with you all and get the best product for the city and the residents. So I appreciate you working together and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Donovan, any comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you guys very much for being here tonight. Thank you for braving the late hour to be with us. I did just have a couple of different questions. So what, the mayor kind of touched on it with, you know, what made us unique in that you guys were joining together for the first time, but why was that? What was the reasoning behind both organizations deciding to move forward as one for us?
Well, I can tell you that after we had sat through, I think, the one or two meetings, two meetings, we really said, in order to make the strategic planning process successful, there were some things that we felt from a professional standpoint needed to happen, and that's really where their specialty is. And so we reached out to each other and had a conversation, and then reached out to Ms. Vincent, and that's, that's how we ended up here. So we really felt like there needed to be some alignment in the beginning, that there needed to be a citizen engagement piece that was in addition to some of the stuff that we originally, USF and SPC Collaborative Labs. So that's how we ended up here. We reached out to one another.
Good.
Really in the best interest of the city.
Right. And I'll just add to that, as far as why we kind of, just kind of saw this, because we work a lot with SMEs because our process is so efficient, but so value, strength-based process. A lot of people, especially within government municipality, the view is very microscopic, focusing on so many small projects that need to be accomplished, and our strength that we, we bring to the table is very telescopic, you know, looking towards the future, how we're working, how we're, how we're going to move ahead, and it's all strength-based and success-based. And so we felt like by adding that to the city, we can really, really help launch you and take you farther.
And we're all about data.
Thank you. And what were the, what was the proposal costs for your two original proposals versus this new one? The new one I'm seeing is $107,000, is that correct?
Yes, $106 and change, yes, something like that, I believe.
I got it right here. It's $106,988.
Yes. Basically $107, yeah. Yes.
And I will tell you on our behalf, real quickly, we actually didn't give you a total amount, and here's why we don't do that. We gave you what each type of facilitation might cost as we go along, because until we see what's happening, sometime, we have to have those discussions with you, you know, right on the front end. But then when we started discussing, we realized there were other things that really need to be put in after we sat through a couple of your meetings and reviewed documents, and we spent a lot of time researching, you know, what's been going on in, in the city for some time. And in order to give you the best product and services, we felt like we needed to add different things into Phase One and Phase Two, and so I'll let.
Yes, and I would say the same thing. Again, we added 2.2 and 2.4, again, just in case those are needed, and those more than likely will be needed, and so that's what happened, how we did it. And I think our original cost was around, and again, we tried to do ranges because it was around 60, I believe, somewhere between 55 and 60, somewhere around there, I think.
Okay.
So I believe that they reduced their costs a little bit. We added ours in, and that, and that's how we came up with the number.
Okay. So is the $107,000, is that firm, or were you telling me that that was, there's going to be some hourly fees in there in the future?
No, I think, I think.
It's firm unless, unless something is added. So one of the things that was brought up was an implementation phase, so I'll just speak to that real quickly. The implementation phase, we agree that's the most important. I mean, other than your stakeholders, if coming from Collaborative Labs, we'll tell you the implementation phase is where you make or break a plan. And so it's really your blueprint, but it's where we can help facilitate you to, you know, work on assessing where you're at and your implementation goals. We don't do it for you, but we can certainly come alongside of you and, and do that. So if that was to happen and you, something that you wanted us to do, we certainly can do that, that would be additional costs.
Okay. Sorry.
It's okay. I was just going to add that, so again, we didn't add it because a lot of times we do see, this is where kind of the city manager and the city manager. and the city manager's leadership team takes over, uh and then communicates that back to mayor and commission. But it is something that could be added.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I just wanna make sure we weren't, some of these workshops weren't gonna just be charged hourly.
Oh, no, 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 oh, no.
You got, you guys watched a few of those meetings.
We understand you cannot pay by the hour here.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And then what's the difference between the stakeholder interviews that the commission and some city leadership, I think you said, would generate versus the resident survey that's gonna go out?
Right, so the stakeholder interviews will be one list, right? And so staff's gonna generate some people, um commission and mayor are gonna generate. So those are gonna be pretty much a SWAT analysis, kind of one-on-one, okay? And then the resident survey is going to everyone. That resident feedback survey um will be, again, we'll have to decide the best way to communicate it out. A lot of times, just to give you an example, uh we'll put a flyer in utility bills. Obviously, we post on the website, your citizen engagement website would have it. Uh you may have rec centers uh where we can do flyers and post that. Uh it really just depends on what tools are available to communicate out to the citizens. Uh but we, the more people we can get to respond to the resident survey is what we want. We want that as a tool for everybody's voice to be heard.
Understood, yeah, agreed. So for the stakeholder selection, for the one that the board may be getting involved with, how would that work? If I, if I say, hey, here's five individuals to interview and then another commissioner says, hey, here's fifty, you know, individuals to interview?
Yeah, no.
Is there gonna be like a cap or?
Yes, there is a cap and I believe we said around eighteen or twenty, if I'm not mistaken. Um, yes, eighteen to twenty key individuals. And so we'll provide you criteria. So we look at um what we would consider like targets of change, agents of change, uh individuals that are uh very involved. Um so you may have a, a president of a neighborhood association. Uh you may have somebody who is um president of the Sierra Club. But we would work and provide the mayor, commission and city staff with criteria that we're looking for. Uh and then we would develop those names together.
Okay, yeah, I understand you have to interview, you know, some people at some point, which I like and I understand that. I'm just, I, I wanna make sure that a, a big um emphasis is put on the actual resident survey that everybody's gonna have a chance to get involved with. Because, you know, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna commissioner, like, let's say me, I just choose my five best friends to interview. And I say, hey, here's what the priorities are.
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't want that to, to happen. Um, is, is the stakeholder engagement forums, is, are those gonna be in person, those are gonna be offered virtual or?
I think that's still to be determined.
Um, yeah, so we are currently offering multiple things. One nice thing about, we actually just upgraded all of our technology at the Collaborative Labs prior to uh the shutdown. Uh so we're already full hybrid, so we can do that mobile as well. So we can do virtual, hybrid or in-person.
Okay, and then how does that bridge, bridge the gap process work once the commission changes? Cause you know, three or four, however many it is, there's gonna be a majorly different board here this time next year. Um what if day one, that, that board comes in and says, yeah, this plan stinks, this mission values, everything stinks, I wanna change directions?
Yeah, so again, I think, seen it happen. Um, um, where newly electeds, you know, they have their own agenda, they don't necessarily agree. Um but we are in a process and so it would be um incumbent upon the city manager as well as us to sit down with whomever those individuals are, walk them through the process to date, walk them through the information, answer any questions that may, they may have, and make sure that they understand what the expectations and charge are for them as an elected going forward.
I, uh, we also did talk about this, that um giving them the opportunity, those that know that they're gonna be running for these seats, giving them the opportunity to be part of it as a resident, right? So they'll get their voice be heard, their voice will be heard in the process before they're ever even elected. So they'll feel like they were part of the process.
Right, they'll have four opportunities to engage.
Okay. Yeah, well, thank you very much. I don't think I have any other questions. I just, I'm excited moving forward with this. Um I thank you guys for coming together on it. It's just, it's kind of a weird balance. You know, you have to get a hundred and seven thousand dollars worth of actual production out of this document. You know, it can't be something that sits on the shelf, but at the same time, I don't wanna handcuff future commissions. You know, I don't wanna say, hey, we have to do this by then, we have to do this by then. Because, you know, if the new commission comes and says, hey, this stinks, I'm fine with that. I, it's, it's just kind of a weird balance, but I, I'm excited to move forward and see what you guys come up with.
So if I could just make a couple of comments on the methodology. So I do agree it is a weird balance, but I will say the reason that we use, the methodology that we use is because really three, three main reasons. It's adaptive, it's transparent and it's responsive. And so at the end of this, there will be a very, very detailed Excel spreadsheet um that makes your eyes cross over. That's really an internal document. But there is a reality that things change, like a global pandemic or a hurricane. And so there is room for that uh flexibility, adaptiveness within the way that we set this up. So um the other thing that I did want um to comment about the methodology um is that one of the other reasons that we really like using this model um is because um it's intended um to not be dominated by one point of view. And so, and so I just wanna make that clear. You said, you know, somebody could have five people that they want interviewed. Well, no, there's criteria for who that is. Um resident survey is sent out to everyone, everyone has an opportunity to engage and that's why we like this process.
And I would say on our behalf and why this is gonna work so well together, even though we use different methodology, our methodologies will blend together well is because of our prioritization techniques that we use. So once they have the data, like they, she said, they're the data people. And we come together and do these um actual, I guess you, you know, the workshops or the forums really. Um we're able to very efficiently um synthesize um and prioritize these things into actual action items, which will then create the roadmap that they're talking about, that can be flexible with implementation, um consultations um from that point forward.
Okay, thank you both again.
Commissioner Vaticaris?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you for being here tonight. I said, you don't know how excited I, I am about this. It's something that I've been pushing since I first got into office in April and I, and we haven't had one in twenty-five years, so. Um and I'm hoping you had the, you were given the old document. If you haven't, it's pretty interesting. The Institute of Government did that as well. And um it was a slightly different approach where it was a five oh one C three, or at least a, a, a not-for-profit corporation that was set up separate from the city to keep its independence of the city. Uh so um and I assume you were given my comments that uh.
Yes, we were, yes.
All right. Um, the one thing, the original um, the original proposal, if I'm not mistaken, it was uh from USF anyway, it was fif- fifty-five thousand or something like that?
I think it might even closer to sixty, but around that.
And that's fine. And, and then it was gonna be either one of, either one or either SPC or USF.
But she didn't have any money in hers.
No, 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 I'm just simply saying that's the way the selection was, okay. So, and I questioned the fifty-five or the sixty thousand dollars at that time, cause I didn't think it was enough just based on just the amount of effort that I, at least the amount of work that I would expect to see in this process. So I'm glad, it's, I mean, you won't hear this too often from commissioner, but I'm glad it's over what you had originally uh proposed, so. Number two, um as far as the um, the, I'm the one who had a little bit of a heartburn with just the staff selecting the stakeholders.
Mm-hmm.
And um, and I'm glad that you said the commission would have an opportunity to do that. I'd like to have that memorialized in your proposal as well.
Um, it is actually there.
It, it is there.
Mm-hmm, yes, if you, um, it states, uh staff and elected officials will be asked to identify an initial set of interviewees and others may be suggested by those interviewed or residents.
Okay, that sounds good. And I was, why, why eighteen? I, I know eighteen to twenty is about what was done in nineteen ninety-three, but that was a separate setup. Why eighteen to twenty?
So, well, I'm, I can answer.
Let me just give you a little more information. Eighteen to twenty, whether the city's twenty-five thousand or two hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay, so eighteen to twenty, go ahead and answer the question.
Let me go first and then I'll tell, yeah.
Yeah, so um, um, it's kind of like doing a survey, right? You get a plus a margin error, usually six hundred when you do a survey is really the responses you want. And so it's the same thing, it's the same concept. Um whether you interview forty or eighteen to twenty, eighteen to twenty is a sweet spot where you're gonna get those numbers from a data perspective. Um and if you, if you interviewed sixty, you're probably still gonna be. If you entered eight, interviewed eighteen to twenty, both gonna be the same. So it's just like doing a survey. We do the Sunshine State Survey with US, USF Nielsen does a Sunshine State Survey for the entire state of Florida. And we only need fifteen hundred responses.
Right.
Yeah, and we have found the same thing as far as when we come to do the convenings, where you could have, we've had five hundred in a convening and we've had fifty, and it, they all end up coming around that same thought. It just ends up, it, it, it's magical. How it happens.
Well, I, you know, the, the um, I, I, I'm a little different than Commissioner Donovan on this. I'm, I'm not gonna get into your business as far as the selection process, that's why, that's what you are for. Um and I'm gonna, you know, always give you uh admissions the benefit of the doubt and how you're gonna get along. It's a different, you two are different. Uh I've been there too, that it's a little different dealing uh objectively with each other than sometimes what we wind up getting into up here, so.
We think it's gonna be a great partner, yes.
I think so too, I, I think so too. The um, but it'll, um, I, I, I guess it, it, it'll be, I, I don't really, I, I guess as it, as, as long as it turns out fine, I'm okay with it. I, I don't wanna wind up getting into some huge argument over, you know, eighteen to tw- who, who picked these people and why is that person on there? And what, what, you know, and my person can't be on there and that person's on there. So I'm gonna leave that to you with your background and experience, so.
One, one thing I could say that might help you is when, when we're working with our clients, and I think it's similar with them, is we consider you the content experts, okay? So if you can think of it this way, you're the content experts, they are the subject matter experts and we are the facilitation experts. And so we're gonna help guide you. What you're seeing here is just some guidance of where we're gonna go, but we're gonna guide you along the way.
Okay, uh, let's see, the um. The, wait, thirteen, forty? The, uh, the one thing I wanna make sure that, I mean, it's just, I, I think it's a correct and a valid statement. The strategic plan transcends commissioners, commissions and terms. And I can't impress upon anybody strong enough and, and that that's the way it has to be. Um it can't be, um, and, and there is gonna be maybe some tendency in the, in the future where it, it's treated as a novelty item. Because that's basically what happened as the time went on with the strategic plan in nineteen, it was a ve- very uh good lesson learned for me. Um that basically um the uh plan was done. Um there was some follow-up with uh Dr. Jerry Lieberman.
I've heard that name forever.
Right, and uh they also did the, and then we also had the benefit of, after that, the Union Academy Neighborhood Plan was done. And then shortly towards the nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand timeframe, there, that whole kind of, the, the enthusiasm and what would you call it? The, you, you know, that sort of thing. It was kind of dealt with as a novelty item and, and basically then it was slowly forgotten. And somehow, um, I know our, our neighboring cities do things a little differently. Dunedin has, all of their employees read the strategic plan annually.
So we call that a living, breathing document.
That's right.
Mm-hmm.
And somehow what I, and I don't mean this as any kind of a criticism, but somehow in your proposal, I know what it's for, it's to create the plan. But as, and you saw my memorandum, that, that's great, but it's just a document, we, uh, city manager, I used to have hundreds of plans that never were used. So somehow the implementation to me is the most important aspect. I think you stated that is the most important. Not only that, but some process in place that's gonna guarantee its longevity. And this continual beating up commissioners of making sure they understand that this plan transcends you. It will continue on when you're gone, it's here for the city and the residents. That's how strongly I feel about it.
Yeah, and I'd just like to comment. So um we completed um a very similar process about maybe a year ago, if that, with the town of Bel Air. And it really, once we did the blueprint and they had this beautiful Excel document, right? They then as a commission determined their dashboard. And that's really what you want. At the end of this, that's part of the implementation, is that dashboard. We're gonna provide the blueprint based on this current proposal, but the dashboard is what is going to allow the plan not to sit on a shelf. The dashboard will allow you as leaders to hold yourselves accountable as well as hold the city manager and leadership accountable. But more importantly, the dashboard will allow the citizens to hold you accountable. And that's really the key piece, but you gotta get the blueprint first.
Right, okay. Um, let's see, I'll try and finish up. The um, and it is a living document. The phase three, you briefly touched on that and um I asked for there to be a phase three. I, I still feel that we need to have some idea of a phase three rather than just, uh, and I know this is a little longer-term process. Um, but I still think we ought to have some understanding, this commission, of how it's all gonna work um once the document is done, even though uh most of us aren't gonna be up here um after March of twenty twenty-two. So um it's just something that I would like to see somewhere, somehow uh shown and on, so we can have a, a, at least some comfort level that, that, um, that'll be taken care of. The um, uh, let's see, lastly. I, I think that I'm hoping actually by um Thanksgiving for sure, but hopefully maybe by August or September, you'll have all the candidates who are gonna be running or seeking office for, in March, identified by then. And um, and it's not in your, um, and, and some of them don't exist right now, they're not signed up or anything. But I'm, I would like to have something in your uh proposal that has a one-on-one with them. Not just as a, uh, as a resident, but somehow a little more um in-depth. And that's in preparation for the chance that they are a commissioner and they're actually prepared and they, they know as much as we do as far as this process. I think that's extremely important so that there is no hiccup or bump in the road between um early March of twenty twenty-two and April, when the new board comes on. I'd like for that plan just to continue on and everybody's comfortable with it. And if there's any candidate that has a problem with it, we would certainly like to know that ahead of time about that as well. And they could share that with you and, and I'm not sure how you would communicate that. But, but, you know, your, your job would be to convince them it's a good thing. So uh I, I think it's a natural uh thing that needs to be done, so.
So I would say the, both of those things that you mentioned are the things that, Commissioner Donovan, that you're saying, those are those extra things that we would have to attach manpower hours to.
And that would be fine. And, and that's all I'm gonna ask is the commission to take that into consideration as far as this, this uh tasking goes. Um, um, it would be the uh additional um information on the implementation and also the um one-on-one at some point um meetings with the uh, the candidates once they're all identified, I guess. Does that make sense to you, Mayor? Yeah, okay, that's all I have. Thank you very much and I'm very excited and congratulations.
I think we ask.
Partnership will be successful.
I think we asked all the questions, we need a motion.
Um, motion to approve with the additional conditions that the uh, there, there'll be uh phase three implementation uh information provided and uh also that there be a, a provision for the um the USF and SPC to meet with the candidates to uh, for a one-on-one meeting to explain to them what the process is about, where, where the progress has been made so far and what to expect once uh, once the prospective candidate may be holding office in March.
I'll second that, but I have a question.
Okay, uh, Mr. Licoris. The uh price tag right now is one thou- one hundred and six thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. We don't know exactly what the new, what the addition task is going to be. Uh, do you think you need to bring it back or we need to have?
I'd like you at least to approve this contract and then, you know, maybe a provision to bring back those additional items for you to vote for or something of that method and stuff.
The actual contract's gonna have to come back to the board, at least on consent agenda somewhere, yeah.
Okay, good, that, that'll be fine then.
Okay.
We'll bring it back when we've had tho- when we've got those two other figures.
Can we add those? Uh, what you're saying is we can add those uh at the time the contract comes back for consent agenda?
Yeah, yeah.
That's fine.
That way we'll make sure that's there.
Sure.
Okay, roll call please.
Commissioner Vaticaris?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yes. Thank you so much, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I just have to say, I'm so excited. This brings me, no, it brings me back to my roots. So, I started my career many, many years ago in the city of Valdosta, Georgia, and this building reminds me of their city hall.
Oh, really?
So, I just have to say, it's gonna be fun coming back. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to ordinance of resolutions, item number 11 is the ordinance, wait a minute. Yes. Item number 11 is the ordinance 2021-03, amended date and of municipal election. This is a second reading. City Attorney, would you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 2021-03, in ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending Section 11 of Article 2 of the city charter to change the date of the municipal election and providing for an effective date hereof, read by title only. And this was advertised and published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on May 12, 2021.
Okay. City Clerk, do you have anything that you'd like to add to that?
It's just something to clean up the charter, because it's the new provision within the supervisor election, so.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none. The chair will obtain a motion.
I'm moved. Second.
Are there any commission comments, questions?
No.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticaris?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yes. Thank you. We're now going to item number 12, which is the resolution 2021-31, supporting state funding for Anclot River dredge and vault project. City Attorney will please read the resolution, 2021-31.
Resolution number 2021-31, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, supporting state funding of the Anclot River Extended Turning Basin dredge project and Sponge Docks flooding abatement project, read by title only.
Thank you. City Manager, anything that you'd like to add to this?
No, we, we brought this forward with as much language as we thought we could put in it. So, it's here for you to look at and add, subtract, or whatever you choose to do with it. With the main purpose, of course, to send word to the governor about, you know, our need for this project, the projects that were approved in the budget, and to keep them there.
Okay. Are there any public comments on this item?
Ponte Antilles, Cuyas, 595 Peninsula Avenue. I'm looking forward towards the dredging to be done. This should be one of your top priorities, to bring our economy back up through the river, through the fishing industry, and bring in the biggest boats possible to come in. With that said, as we talked earlier from the previous public comments, as I've mentioned the river before, and certain stuff that were mentioned, I will say, my family and another loved one that was personally attacked regarding past issues, when I only spoke on political issues, and therefore, in the next coming weeks, I will speak on the political issue that was the Anclot River and the dredging, starting back from the 70s moving forward to the 80s. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments on this item? Here none. The chair will obtain a motion.
Can I understand what we're voting on? There's a resolution, and there's a memorandum attached in the same agenda item? Are we voting just for the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, so, moves.
Second.
Okay. Go to commission comments. Well, what I'd like to say is, this resolution shows that the BOC, supporting the state funding for the Anclot River and the extended turning base, which is the House Bill 2923, and the Sponge Docks flooding amendment, which is the project, House Bill 2925. You know that Mr. Robinson and I would be working very, very close with the two projects, with the Speaker of the House, Chris Pross, Representative Chris Ladvala, and State Senator Ed Hooper, to obtain funding for these two projects. And we have been providing updates to the BOC, and we're providing status, the different stages of this bill. Question that I have is, not a question, but what I wanted to say is, what's really the benefit of the resolutions that we make? Is that just to make us feel good? Is that actually gonna help us? Is that, but it doesn't hurt to go ahead and, you know, vote on it and accept it. I don't see that it's necessary, but, you know, it doesn't hurt. Today, I had the opportunity to speak to the Speaker of the House, Chris Pross, and he believes that both items will be signed by the governor. What they did is, the two bills, they will combine under the general fund, you know, the general budget. So, he thinks it's gonna be signed soon. He doesn't know exactly what day it's gonna be, but it looks good that we're gonna get it.
Great.
Any other comments, Commissioner?
No, I don't have any. Thank you for what you've been doing. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Donovan, any comments?
I'm happy to support the resolution. I'm excited to see it through.
Commissioner Vaticaris, any comments?
I, I'd like to sign, I'd like to go ahead and approve the resolution. Also, just for information, Congressman Bill Rakis also called Governor DeSantis, encouraging him to sign the budget as well without touching our money. So, I very much appreciate that as well. It doesn't hurt. I don't think we're stepping on any toes with this resolution. We probably should have done something like this the first time around, before the governor vetoed that one, but, but I do like to be a little proactive in this, so it doesn't hurt. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I agree, it doesn't hurt, but I don't think it's really necessary, because right now, they're in the stage now that it's gonna be signed for it. Okay, we have a motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticaris?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yes, thank you. Okay, number 13 was deferred.
Mayor, I had my memorandum in there about the city paying for the river dredging?
That's not part of the resolution, though.
You said you were gonna deal with it separately.
Do you want to discuss it? That's fine, but that was not part of the resolution.
No, it wasn't, but Vice Mayor Carr, was it that your question?
I asked if we're, the memorandum was part of the resolution. The answer was no. I was just trying to get clarification of what we're actually voting on.
If you would like to discuss it, that'd be fine to discuss.
Yeah, thank you.
But it's not part of the resolution, though.
No, it's not part of the resolution, but I asked the city manager if I include that in here, and, and he thought that that would be fine. There would be time. I think we do have time. And I feel strongly that the city needs to move ahead and fund the outer cut of the, of the, the Anclot River Federal Channel, from the south end of Anclot Key out to the Seaboy. And we've been sitting on this for six years. At one time, the Army Corps said that they were gonna dredge the entire channel at one time, then about a year ago, they said, no, we're gonna split it into the inside cut from the east side of Anclot Key to the bridge, and then we're gonna use our own resources to do the, the part that I just described, the outer cut. But, the outer cut, based on the last presentation, it's obvious that we're not even registering on their radar, as far as any priority at all. So, you've heard many people privately and publicly state that unless the entire channel is dredged, what good is it? And a very important part of our marine industry and, and our economy as a whole are these deeper draft boats, the shrimp boats and the fish boats that come in and out. I mean, I'll give you an example. One shrimp boat picks up 5,000 gallons of fuel in Tarpon Springs, but they're not coming in, because they're bypassing it, because they, they don't have the channel from the Seaboy Inn for, to safely navigate into the, into the city. We do have the local knowledge boat owners, such as the Julianne, owned by Mr. Jack Russell and Julie Russell, they come in, but they've got local knowledge. So, I've also talked to Mr. Young, who owns River Energy, about this, and, and we had one boat actually relocate out of Tarpon Springs, and I think they, as I understand, they've made it up to Brunswick, Georgia. So, you know, I think from the Army Corps' perspective, they see these larger boats as really moving up and down the Florida seaboard, without really needing to be in Tarpon Springs, or Hookers Point in Tampa, or Fort Myers, the Shrimp Docks in Fort Myers. They could be anywhere. So, being in Tarpon Springs is not important for them. But what they see as important is these larger yachts, and some of the smaller boats, that tie up to our marinas and things like that, that they are accommodating with the inner cuts. So, I don't want to leave out an important part of our economy. If the governor signs the budget intact, then we're gonna have $600,000 in earmarked funds that the city manager had set aside as a contingency. And also, if you look at the pie chart that the city manager, I believe the city manager staff did for us, basically, the, the total amount of funds that the county's provided so far is $300,000. In 1996, they provided $650,000. And if you just do a standard CPI escalation over that time since then, that's equivalent to $1.2 million in today's funds. I'm not shy, I'm not shy about asking for more money. I think they've gotten off extremely light with the $300,000. And the fact that those outer cuts, now that the rerouted path for the outer cuts is actually part of the intracoastal waterway, which they are responsible for, they ought to be participating greater than, than, than they have in the past. And I just don't think they know about it. So, I've written this letter to County Commissioner Eggers, that I've stated very clearly that these views are my own, and not necessarily the entire commission. I'd like to remove that line out of there, and say that I've got the support of the commission for providing you this information, and asking if he could help with the rest of the county commissioners, in trying to secure additional funds for, so we can get that dredging done. Recognizing that if you agree with that, then there's gonna be some additional work that the, the city manager has to do in communicating with the Army Corps, as well as the county, to kind of set up how all this is supposed to work for the city to pay for this. I, I mean, I don't, we're on six years. I guarantee you, come March, the new board is gonna be inheriting the same problem, if nothing is done now. And I don't think that's fair to a new board. So, that's all I've got to say about it. So, I'd like to get support from the commission to, to move ahead, and ask the, one, to endorse the concept of the city paying for that outer cuts, and number two, to move ahead and ask the county to pay, to provide us, for example, up to $900,000 of additional funds for their part in all of this. By the way, that area out there is not within the city of Tarpon Springs. It's actually a combination of both the Pinellas County and the state. That's outside the city limits. But we own it, just because we're the local sponsors for the entire river from the Anclot, from the alternate 19 bridge all the way out to the Seaboy, in the eyes of the Army Corps. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, the R cuts, as you said, is not the city jurisdiction, but we have the benefit of the channel. That's, that's not a federal channel, that's part of the state, correct?
No, no, it's a federal channel.
It is a federal channel.
It is the federal channel. The federal channel goes all the way out from the US alternate 19 bridge, all the way to marker one, which is the Seaboy.
Okay. Well, Congressman Billy Rakis, we, we requested funding here. He was able to provide $3,800,000 to us. We were under the understanding that that was gonna cover the whole thing, not knowing that the R cuts are gonna be a separate project at a time. I think we need to go back to Congressman Billy Rakis, and because, and see if we can secure any more funding for the rest of the, of the project. I think it's $2 million for that, that portion.
One point up, the, the estimate that Ms. Blevins, which is Congressman Bill Rakis' deputy chief of staff that provided us, was between $1 and $1.5 million for that work. We have $600,000 that's been earmarked. So, what we need is another, to, to max it to the 1.5 that the Army Corps is saying that then it would be $900,000. But what I'm hoping for is we can get as much as we can, take that to the Army Corps, and say, look, we're subsidizing this by this amount, can't you at least give us the rest of it, based on your internal funds? And I'm, I'm hoping that we would have some luck on that, but we need to be a little creative and think out of the box on this. I mean, I appreciate everything that Congressman Bill Rakis does, but he's not the chairman of the House Appropriate, Defense Department, I'm sorry, the Defense Appropriations Committee for the US Congress. If he was, he'd have a different authority as far as how he could help us. But he's not that, and I don't know who is.
Well, he's still our representative, and now the, the Congress is using earmarks back into the way it was years ago. So, we need to, and I can take that to a commission, to the Congressman Billy Rakis, and see if we can, if we can secure some funding. Because even if we use our money that we're going to, we have already earmarked, it's not gonna be enough, like you said. So, I, I'd rather work with the, I'd rather we work with Congressman Billy Rakis.
Instead of the county?
Oh, we can work with both.
I mean, all I'm asking...
Because the county, I don't think will be in favor to do anything.
It's part of their intracoastal waterway. I mean, we can, all I'm asking for is to get support of the commission, so I can eliminate that as being my whole idea by itself, that the commission is, is authorized me to send this letter to you on behalf of the commission. Here's the information on it. We would like for you to help us bring this matter to the rest of the county commission for consideration and providing us additional funds. And I'm hoping Commissioner Egger would probably call you, Mayor, and discuss it further, rather than me. I mean, I just, or call me, or the city manager, the county administrator, the city manager, and get some additional information. But, you know, I just don't, I think we need to pursue all avenues. I mean, I just don't, it's been six years, and, and I just don't see, trying to ask Commissioner, I'm sorry, Congressman Bill Rakis for something like this. It's gonna take more than him. To get an earmark in 1996, it was Congressman Mike Bill Rakis, Congressman Bill Young, which was the head of the Defense Appropriations Committee. He was the head of the Defense Appropriation Committee, that actually oversaw the Army Corps' budget. There was very little they could do about it. And then also, it was US Senator Bob Graham, and US Senator Connie Mack, that those four got us that, that money from the federal government.
And that was back in 1996?
Yeah.
That was a long time ago.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah. So, my, my take on that is, we need to start talking to Congressman Billy Rakis first, and see, because this is a federal channel.
You don't want to ask the county?
We can ask him, too.
That's fine.
You know, but the county, I don't think they're gonna be able to give us $1.5 million. We could try, you know, but we also have, whatever money we have, we're not going to use, that we already have earmarked, we can use that. But it's not enough. We need to go to the other revenues, in my opinion.
Well, I, I don't disagree with anything you're saying. All I'm asking is for some, some kind of definite, you know, a vote on allowing me to eliminate the fact that it's my opinion, that I've got the support of the commission, to send that letter to county, to County Commissioner Eggers. We would pursue with yourself, to Congressman Bill Rakis, and, and then there would be some, perhaps, communication from the city manager, through Mr. Robertson, with the Army Corps, to see whether there's some kind of a deal that we could do. Provide X number of dollars, they provide the rest to get it done. Provide X number of dollars, they provide the rest to get it done. That, those are the three things that I'd like to see.
If I, if I could, Mayor, um, so I have no problem asking the county for any help on anything. I think that's a good idea. There is one thing that I do struggle with currently in your letter. Um, it talks about that the city is discussing self-funding the outer cuts. I totally am for this dredge and how do we do this. But I, I do think the mayor is on the right path, that we need to take the approach first with the congressional appropriations before we're saying we're going to self-fund it. Um, that would be my only thing in your, in your letter that I have concerns about. But asking the county for money, I have no problem with it. The city of Tarpon Springs residents pay over close to ten million dollars in ad verum taxes a year to the Pinellas County. We see very little benefit come back to the city. So I think it's important that we ask the county for any money at all times, um, that we have to do that.
The, the, you know, I, I, I would agree with you on that, but I just, I just don't see Congressman Bill Rakas. I mean, I, I, I love the man, he's a great guy. I just don't see what he can do for us between now and the fall when this river dredging is being done. I see maybe twenty twenty-two, maybe twenty twenty-three. And that's going to be nine years since we got started on this thing. We should be preparing for the next dredging by then.
Yeah, I think the target from, um, the staff was for a twenty twenty-one dredge, is that correct, city manager?
Yes, we're on course for the, the present dredge of, of our portion. We said in our timeline, you know, late twenty-one was the outside of our timeline. So I know there's things going around, but that was our original timeline that we thought would get done for that part. But of course, we're talking about another part that's not being done.
Now, what I was getting at, the dredging is going to be done towards the fall of this year, twenty twenty-one. I don't think we're going to get any federal money for the Army Corps at the earliest twenty twenty-two. I just don't see it. I mean, just from a, of, of, you know, the, the normal federal budget process and, and, um, and then of course, um, if that doesn't happen, then where do we stand? Um, I just, I just, it's a very frustrating situation. We've got the means to do it, and, um, I'm, I'm just not sure. You know, if, if a road was damaged leading into Tarpon Springs, we would be working overnight to fix that. But we've got something, to me, is critical to our economy.
If it's, if it's US nineteen, the federal government or the FDOT is responsible for it, right?
Pardon me?
If it's US nineteen or ultra-nineteen, we're working with FDOT to repair it. It's their jurisdiction. So we have to be careful on which jurisdiction we're paying for in that aspect.
Well, pick a city street for people to get to their homes.
Right, a city street's completely different though, that's, doesn't, that doesn't apply in this situation.
I think we're drifting away from the, uh-
My point is, we're, we're not being fair in the priorities, that's all.
The discussion's all about.
Yeah.
You know, we all want to have this thing to be dredged, we want to have to be, to, to see it completed. I agree that we, uh, we need, the sooner the better. But I, I believe that we should have both avenues. I will not get, you know, not only for the, uh, for the county, but also for this, you know, for the federal government as well.
So, so how can I change, how can, well, I was going to ask, how can I change my letter to work it, make it work for the commission so I can get your support for it?
Well, maybe you just send the letter that we, uh, we're going to take this approach we were talking about. If you want to just say, you know, send the letter, you know?
I'll send the letter, I, I, I'll be happy, I, no, that's fine. I'll just send the letter myself as it's worded right now.
Okay.
And, and again, it's very clear that it's my views and not the, um, um, you know, the, not the commission's. And, and I'm sure maybe County Commissioner Eggers will call you, Mayor, and you can discuss it with him, so.
Well, you know, the thing is, we all thinking, we all want to have this to be done as, as fast as possible and to have, you know, the federal government and the county or the state to, to finance it. Uh, we just have to go and reach out to, uh, to all of them and see, you know, to get as much funding as we can.
We've been doing it for six years.
Huh?
We've been trying to get it for six years.
That's because, that's because the information that we got the first time is not the same, you know, at first they say, we're going to dredge the whole thing. And then they, they divided it to two different projects. It was the Army Corps of Engineers that did that. It wasn't shared to us at the beginning.
Mayor, that's fine. I, I don't want to take any more of the commission's time this evening on this matter. I'll just send the letter and, and hopefully Commissioner Eggers will call you and you, you two can discuss it. And I understand the rest of the, the commission's position on this thing. That's fine, thank you.
I never commented on this yet.
Yeah.
Um, got caught in a back and forth and I, I didn't, I didn't say it. Um, I do support the letter. I'm happy to ask for any money we can get from the county. I understand where you're coming from in it, I support you sending the letter. Um, as far as fully committing to saying, hey, we're going to fund this all ourselves. I mean, I don't want to pick up my toys and go home just yet. I, I think it's better to work with the government rather than try to just say, hey, whatever, we'll do it ourselves. But I'm, I'm in that desperation mode as well. And in a few months, if we haven't gotten any updates, that's definitely a concept that I would consider is saying we'll do it ourselves.
Say that we will do it ourselves?
Yes.
Leave it in there like that?
I mean, I don't even think you leave it in there bad.
No, no, that's fine.
I think, because right now it says now it appears as a matter of last resort, the city will be discussing self-funding the outer cuts. At least I have requested an agenda item to that effect. That's what you have in there right now. I don't, I don't think that's wrong, that's what we're doing right now. So I'm good with you sending the letter.
Can I eliminate, I mean, if the rest of the commission agrees, then the idea would be to eliminate that it's not my, uh, opinion by itself and that it reflects the commission's opinion. The very first sentence, the second sentence up there.
Uh, yeah, I see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that. I think it's just asking for money and expresses our frustration and getting the outer cuts funded.
Just eliminate that.
Sure.
So it's two, two.
I think all the letters you should go as a team, not as an individual commissioner, in my opinion.
What's two, two, so therefore?
No, I'm, I'm good with the letter.
You're good with the letter?
Yeah, I'm not a big fan of the way it's phrased with where it last resort right now. I want, I still want to move with the process to the Congress, but I'm happy with asking the county for money. I have no problem asking the county for money. I ask them for money all the time to tell me no.
If I, if, for sake of not really being my favorite term, if I was to weasel-word it a bit, would you be okay with that?
Yeah.
In other words, I'll soften that point that the city's, uh, self-funding aspect. But, but nevertheless, the, the problem I'm having with eliminating that, maybe we can say in partnership with the county or something like that.
Sure.
Is that better?
Yeah, look, I want to ask the county for money anytime and that-
So the issue is just the city self-funding it by himself?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll, I'll, is that okay with you, Commissioner Donovan?
I'm good with that.
Okay, Mayor?
Sure, we'll do that.
I'll change it and if you-
But we're still going to go to the, uh, we're still going to-
If any of you don't like it, you can chew me out at the next meeting.
No, that's not, that's not the point. Okay, let's move on. What's the next item?
We need a motion for clarification at all.
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, do we want to go ahead and put a motion out there so we're all clear? I mean, that's something we talked about, right?
We need to take a vote on that.
I don't know, City Attorney, can you opine on that one?
There was a comment earlier from the mayor about that that's how it's going to be. So yeah, you would need to make a motion.
So we did?
I, I'm okay, legally speaking, I'm okay if it's consensus. And I mean, you all have said on the record that you're okay with the changes that are being made and that it can go out underneath the Board of Commissioners guise. If that is sufficient for you, legally it's sufficient. If you would prefer to have a, a, a motion, you can certainly make a motion.
The reason why, we, we have you at a disadvantage. We had a rules of procedure work session where this business of consensus came up and it was not a, a very favorite thing because of the way consensus means one person objecting, you don't have a consensus. So we felt that on matters like this, we should just go ahead and take a vote rather than basically turning out to be a vote anyway, but it, just under a different word of consensus. So, I mean, even historically Roberts' rules, uh, took the place of the consensus form.
And I understand that. And I'm just saying from a legal point of view, you can go through consensus or if your rules of procedure as amended state that you have to have a motion or that it's preferred to have a motion, I would defer to the rules of procedure.
Thank you. I move to, um, um, one, the mayor contact Commissioner Bill, uh, I'm sorry Congressman Bill Rakas to, uh, discuss the, the prospects of get, of getting additional federal funding. And two, um, allowing Commissioner Vaticiotes to, uh, send the letter, uh, to County Commissioner Eggers, uh, with the, um, full force of the commission, with the exception of, um, uh, eliminating the self-funding, but perhaps with, in partnership with a county, funding it that way.
I'm still having issue with that. The, the issue that I have is all those letters that should be coming out of the mayor's office and, or everybody's signature instead of just one commissioner.
It is with everyone's signature.
Yeah?
That is the motion, isn't it, to put everyone's signature on it?
No, that's just coming from one commissioner.
I thought we were all signing it, it was my understanding.
That's not what it-
I'd, I'd be happy to do, put everybody's name on it too, that's not a problem.
Well, what I'm seeing is-
I just want the letter to go to the county, that's all I want. How do you want me to amend my motion to, to reflect that? Mayor, do you want to sign it? I'll be happy to-
No, I want everybody to sign it, that way it's just unity.
Then I amend my motion that the letter will be amended for everyone's signature, for all five commissioners' signature. Is that acceptable?
Second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor, who is this?
Okay. The item number thirteen was deferred, so we go to item number fourteen, which is Public Art Project, approval Vice Mayor Carr. Would you present this item, please?
Yeah, um, I, I sent a, there's a backup information on the, online and on the agenda as well. I've been on the board for about four years and there's been a lot of turnover on the Public Art Committee over the past maybe year and a half or so. Um, one person has remained is Joan Jennings as a chair. So I do want to bring up some discussion points that we've had over the past four years. We've had, um, we've had workshops with the BOC and Wesel had, um, annual presentations with, uh, the Public Art Committee. Over the past few years, the Public Art Committee has really moved forward with a handful of projects and we're grateful for that. Um, there's some nice projects, I think a great example is the, the light boxes that are on Dodo Canice and the sponge docks. Uh, you've got the recent mural in, uh, Sizzler Field with the soft, I'm sorry, with the baseballs. Um, and it, it's, I think we're making some great progress as a whole in the city with, uh, seeing some nice public art pieces, uh, coming before us. Um, there's a couple of items that, um, I do understand with government and with committees that things take much longer than, uh, I would necessarily like to see in the private sector or personally on how you move forward with certain items. But there is a, a handful of things that we've talked about in the past, over the past four years, that I just want to make sure that the, the Public Art Committee is up to date on because we've had so much turnover in that time period. A handful of those things are in the backup information and, um, a lot of that was around like interactive artwork. And that's something that the board has, um, had discussions about is we have a lot of tourists, we have a lot of people here locally that travel to Tarpon Springs, um, that really enjoy artwork that you can interact with. Uh, when I travel to other parts of the state, um, or other parts of the country, I love finding artwork that I can interact with, take pictures with, post on Instagram or something along those lines. And it really reflects positively of the, the city I visit. And it's a great opportunity, I think, to really showcase our city. Um, there's a handful of things on here that I just asked that we, we look at as a commission. And, um, again, these are, these are just recommendations. This isn't necessarily you have to do this or this, this, or this. It's just from past discussions that we've had as a board as a whole. Um, we've asked that we look at more interactive arts. Uh, we asked that we looked at the stoplight control boxes, just for a little more, um, information on that is there's these large silver boxes on our intersections that control our lights. And other cities in Tampa, Clearwater, I think Dunedin, you'll see that a lot of them have vinyl wraps around them. Um, I've just proposed some ideas that you could use for these vinyl wraps that I think would enhance the aesthetics of these intersections and also incorporate some history, um, of Tarpon Springs to, um, the intersections. Um, let's see here, interactive artwork, uh, a couple of other examples would be, um, some benches that you could sit on. There's an artist down in St. Pete and, uh, in the backup it shows it's a, a large bronze statues. And I think it'd be kind of neat to, um, utilize something like this. For example, around the train depot or in the sponge docks. In the sponge docks, you could have, um, like an older sponger with the clipping shears where he's cutting a sponge. And then you could have someone actually sit next to him and take a picture. Um, although we've got a lot of spongers here locally, we don't always see them working. Um, and you typically see the, the historic sponger with his helmet, but we don't see the clipping of the sponge, um, or that aspect. And I know down in St. Pete, they're super, super popular along Beach Drive area where this artist has like four or five of them, um, that are just constantly photo ops for people. And it's a great way to, uh, bring some interactive art into the community. Uh, secondly, it would be something along the lines of, um, having maybe a conductor at the train station, um, sitting down or standing up. I'm not really sure how that works. I know Dunedin has something similar, but I wouldn't want to be anywhere close to what Dunedin has. I would like to have it unique to Tarpon Springs, uh, in that aspect. So if it's a conductor, maybe it's sitting down on a break, wa, looking at his, um, his train or his, um, his watch for the next train to where, um, people in downtown can interact with him or her, um, on the bench. And then, um, as I, I stick with the interactive artwork, there's also, um, the interactive murals. One of them that we really liked as a board was the, um, the part of acting like catching a tarp. And I remember we were upstairs in the old conference room and that was part of our, um, uh, what was it? It was a workshop that we had and we had some discussions back and forth. The board of commissioners loved it, the public art that was there loved it. Um, one of the items that was presented was presented to do something along those lines where I felt that the Public Art Committee liked the idea and then it came back and then they, they axed the idea. So, um, what I'd like to ask for is at least that we have some type of recommendation to the Public Art Committee to take some different approaches. I know you all are working very hard and I appreciate everything you're doing for your volunteerism and making sure that the public arts is, is represented well in all areas and all facets of the city. Um, we understand that we have the, the sponge docks, the downtown, we have Lake Tarpon area, we have Sunset Beach, and we have everything between from Union Academy to Riverside Field area to, um, the, around the bayous. There's a lot of different aspects that we could do public art at. And, uh, I'm just super excited and I know we've got a, a great fund currently in place, about two hundred and forty thousand dollars, to see some more projects come, uh, before the commission to approve. And that's what I'm asking here tonight is that we will see some more, uh, projects here in the next few months to approve, um, that we can move forward and see some more public art showing up in the city of Tarpon Springs. Uh, we, we live in a historic area, we all know that we, we have, I, I was visiting Sarasota a couple of weeks ago and they're just really strong in the arts down there and I, I just see, I get so inspired on them down there. So I'm super passionate about this. Um, I think you all know that because I, I do watch the meetings, I do get involved with it. Um, and so I would like to see some of these items at least, um, move forward. Uh, if the rest of the commission feels, um, that it's necessary to make a recommendation to the Public Art Committee and then have them figure out the ways to do it, um, on what it could look like. I just provided some ideas in the background and some ideas for guidelines, um, overall. But like I said, this is just more of a, a discussion to say, this is what we've talked about over the past four years. I know there's a lot of new people on the board and I would like to see some, uh, things move forward sooner than later. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor, thank you. Uh, before we go to the public comments, I would like to ask for a motion to extend the meeting.
I move that we extend to eleven thirty.
Second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor, who is this?
Yes, thank you. And now we're going to the, uh, public comments. I know that the chair from the Public Art Committee is here. Thank you for waiting so patient, too.
Good evening. I just got off a plane from New York this morning, so this is, uh, Joan Jennings, twenty-two oh four Pine Drive. And as Mayor Elhuiz has stated, I am the chair of the Public Art Committee. Um, I appreciate all of, uh, Vice Mayor Carr's suggestions, but with all due respect, every single item on that list, as a courtesy to our sitting commissioner then and now vice mayor, was made an agenda item for the Public Art Committee and, uh, discussed at great length, researched. Uh, some of the projects were pretty well along and we ran into, uh, significant roadblocks. Uh, many of them had to do with, uh, insurance and liability issues, which we- Many of them had to do with insurance and liability issues, which we couldn't get around. The, I think in order, the wrap boxes were investigated by a prior committee, you know, subcommittee of the PAC, and they were found to be unacceptable by Duke Energy, because the boxes contained serial numbers and designations which couldn't be covered or obscured. I know City Manager LaCorus helped us on that. And Mark, I think you'll agree, we ran into a kind of roadblock on that one.
Yes, and we're working on it again. We're revisiting that from our last talk, revisiting and getting with them again, and maybe finding some that aren't Dukes, if they aren't Dukes. So we are working on that again, to try to firm that up, and see if we can get some headway from the last time we committee did it. So we are in the process of that now.
Right. Some of the other projects, there was the vintage postcard. That was presented to the Public Art Committee with an enormous budget. It was $53,000. That was also discussed. The whole concept of doing a vintage postcard was kind of discussed and ruled out at a prior meeting, because it's very repetitive. I think every municipality in the area has one. And it was basically considered to be graphic design, and not original art. And it also resembles a business sign, which under 295H is to be rejected by the Public Art Committee. Some of the other considerations, we did have an artist that then Commissioner Carr brought to the Public Art Committee, Kyle Pierce, who was, we were actually in contract to do some whimsical pelicans, interactive art down at the sponge docks, and Mr. Pierce disappeared. One of our committee meetings members here tonight, Bill Meals, went more than out of his way, as did I, to try to locate him, to no avail. So that was one of your suggestions that literally evaporated. As I said, you know, everything that you suggested, we considered. We are currently working on a number of projects. I am preparing the annual report to the Board of Commissioners. I think, Mark, you have me scheduled to the end of June.
You're the next regular meeting, June 8th, or? I believe you're on for June 8th.
Okay, and we have, we did have a major project that was spearheaded by Lucie Anne Robinson, who's here tonight, for Innis Park. That ran into a roadblock when it was private property, and the owner thought it would be a privacy issue. We are currently on tap to do a Black Heritage project, which was evolved over maybe the past couple of years. We have a Blue Ribbon Selection Panel. You know, Reverend Milton Smith, who was just here today, is on it. Mrs. Annie Dabs, whom I think you all know. Dudley Sally, who's the president of the Historical Society. Rodrigo Davis, who's the provost of SPC. Teresa Wilkins, the executive director of the Lepa Ratner. Tina Bukavales, who's going to provide us with some insights. The thrust of the program is the amazing symbiotic founding of Tarpon Springs, with the support of the, the black sponge hookers, and the Greek sponge divers, and how they came together to make Tarpon City the place it is. So I think we're, we're doing a lot of very positive things. We installed the Glenn Goodacre Storytime Sculpture in front of what had, you know, the Cultural Heritage Museum. We approved the Christopher Still mural at the hospital. And I think our crowning touch is the Elizabeth Indiana's historic mural in the Cultural Arts Center. And we just approved a key, an informational key, at the last meeting. The mural is absolutely magnificent. So I think that we have developed a lot of truly significant artwork that's unique to Tarpon Springs, that will attract people to town. We are also working with Chief Young, and Mark, and Mrs. Fadolidas from the high school, to do a student art project at Sunset Beach. I know Vice Mayor Carr had suggested an Ohio artist named David Danforth to do a number of fish murals, but we made the decision at the last meeting to use Tarpon Springs High School students for the beach. I think it's a great way to involve the community. It establishes pride among both the children and their parents. And I think it will be just a wonderful thing to go to a Sunset Beach concert and say, "My child did those paintings," or my, their friends did it. We also, as Vice Mayor Carr did, indicated, we did the baseball mural at Sizzler Field, and we have a second call. Some of the residents say they wanted to see softballs. They're going to get some softballs. So, you know, we've been very responsive, I believe, to both commission and residents' comments and questions about what we're doing. I think we've made, we've kept to extremely high standards. We don't want to imitate or do things that exist anywhere else, because Tarpon is unique, and we are trying to do unique items.
Thank you. I think when you present us with your annual report, you will have all these explanations that Vice Mayor Carr is looking for, and we do.
And the budget.
You forgot to say that we also had the COVID-19 delays, that you had to put up with that. And you were able to accomplish a lot, even though they had all these difficulties, so.
Right, the art boxes is going into its second phase. Bill Meals has been examining various other locations in Tarpon to put them. We've been in touch with Mark and Tom Funchen about possibly hardwiring some of them. So there's been a lot of work on that project as well.
Okay. I'm looking forward to your annual report. I think it's going to have a lot of good explanation there. Really is, I like to, I like to see the recommendations coming from the, from your Public Art Committee, instead of from the commission to the, you know.
I agree.
To do that, so. But I appreciate the frustration Vice Mayor has, because he has a lot of love with art, and he is, a lot of the things were actually initiated by him.
Yes. As I said, they were all made agenda, agenda items, and they were discussed.
I know that, how you feel about that, so.
Right, no, I mean, it's not like, you know, we ignored them. We did have a lot of other projects that were, we had an Artist Alley project that was completely scratched because of insurance and liability concerns. That's been our greatest bugaboo. Sometimes the insurance costs are double what we're willing to pay a lot of the, you know, younger and less experienced artists. We have been putting, oh, and Mark LaCorus came up with kind of a go-around, to some extent, to the effect that if we pay an artist $1,000 or less, they're considered a limited subcontractor, and it's covered under the city's liability policy. So that, we're using, we used it for the baseball field. It's a great way to encourage young and student artists, which we've been putting a great deal of emphasis on. So we're either going to be doing a lot of our work with young student artists, to give them some exposure, to interest them in art, to build their college application portfolios, whatever it takes, or we're going to go really high-end and do super significant projects, you know, like the Black Heritage Project. I may be speaking prematurely, but while I was in New York, I spoke to an old friend of mine at the Department of Agriculture, and he thinks that we might be able to get some significant funding for it, because of its uniqueness.
Sounds good. Do you feel comfortable, if the commission asks you questions, are you going to wait till?
Fire away.
To the annual report?
Fire away.
Huh? When you're going to have more information?
Well, basically, I just gave you a synopsis of the report, which is a PowerPoint, and illustrations, and pretty pictures. And it will have a detailed budget. I'm working with Diane Wood and Marissa on finalizing the budget, both.
Mayor, when, when, if you may ask, when the budget, when the report's going to be made?
June 8th, I think you said, Mark?
June 8th, next meeting, next regular meeting.
Next meeting. We just wait till then, I think. You're going to have all the information with you. It's not fair to ask you all these questions now, we just, I know you, all these things is from your memory right now, so.
Such as it is. But I think people who know me know that I, I'm, I'm a member of the Coast Guard Auxiliary and Semper Peratus, I'm always prepared.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I'll wait till next meeting, when you're going to have your annual report.
Vice Mayor Carr, this was your memorandum?
I just had a comment for the city manager, because I mean, when we talked last year about issues with the artist mural, it was about insurance again, but then it also was private property issues, too.
Right, we, we had made an executive policy decision, for a number of reasons, not to do any public art projects on private property.
But it, so there's, just to think out of the box a little bit, from a creativity standpoint, we asked the city manager a year ago to work with the HR director to see if we have a special carve-out for these types of situations, so we don't have to pay additional dollars in for the artist. So the artist gives you the proposal. I think this happened with the Liz Indiana's situation, where it was a surprise that it was going to be X amount of dollars, I don't know what it was, $5,000, or whatever it was, for additional insurance, that the city actually holds a policy, and it would be greater than a $1,000 piece of art, but it would go under their umbrella, so it would be some type of inner agreement. I'm not sure what that is, so the discussion was.
We, I, I worked very closely with Diane Wood and Tom Tresk. I'm kind of notorious for my workarounds. We couldn't come up with anything. As I said, the only thing we came up with was that $1,000 fee.
Okay, so we did give direction to the city manager. I haven't heard back from the city manager since last year on this item. I mean, it'll be noted on, on my review this year for the city manager that we never had follow-up about insurance for the public art.
Oh, we had, no, we had.
You did have a follow-up about the insurance.
I don't remember it, so, okay.
Yeah, no, I mean, you know, as I said, we, we-
It's not from you from the public art, it's from the city manager, and that's what.
But we, we got-
Hey, look.
-extensive reports from Tom Tresk, so.
Okay, so.
Under, under $1,000, we could do it as a contract. Over, we'd have to have a separate policy, that was.
So my say is get a separate policy for the city, but we could talk about this in another meeting, moving forward.
Okay.
I would like just to ask that we look at some of these other interactive aspects from like a bench standpoint, what that looks like. And then if there's an opportunity still to have some type of interactive art, I know at the meeting that you discussed that it wasn't about the high schoolers, it was more about the funds going towards the hooker, the bohemian hooker.
That, that morphed into the Black Heritage Project.
The Black Heritage, okay. So I mean, I would like to, I mean, respectfully ask that you, you still give the artist, David Danforth, another shot at the Sunset Beach Corral, because I think you guys talked about-
Well.
-Sunset Beach, back of the.
Well, what we decided at the last meeting was to use Danforth's shark mural at the golf course, and basically reserved Sunset Beach for Tarpon Springs High School students.
All of Sunset Beach.
And Commissioner Donovan, I think I even reached out to you for some help with, you know, local, you know, like the Little League parents and stuff like that, to try to get some responses for more student and youth art.
So I was, I was just asking, I mean, David put a lot of information into that. I think there's some historic aspects of the underwater scene with the mangroves on the corral, and also the Anclot Lighthouse, and also the interactive mural with the tarpon. I think that's a great asset, I think it would be for Tarpon Springs. I am full support, I was the one that asked the, Mark, I was the one that asked the city manager to follow up with the principal, after I talked to the principal, about doing the student artwork, potentially in the crosswalks, and it kind of morphed into some different areas from a safety standpoint. I love that, I think it's a great idea, I'm looking forward to it. I do think there's some other areas, I mean, David is world-renowned with being on magazines. He's in six magazines. He's been in other countries across Europe, he's been on three covers, he's been commissioned by Yeti to do things custom for Yeti. I mean, he's, he is a renowned artist, and a large artist, in my opinion. So to me, I think it's a neat opportunity for him to have some pieces here. He's from Tampa, although he lives in Ohio currently. He's looking to relocate, I think, some, at some point, back to Florida, but he is from Tampa, and he grew up in this area. And it really is the coastal picture of having something to do with the Anclot Lighthouse, having to do with interactive art with the tarpon. If we can't do it at the Sunset Beach, then I would ask that we look at some other areas in Tarpon, to do something with those items. I think they're, they're great pieces, I think they're assets for our community.
Well, as I said, we're doing the shark at the golf course. One of our golfer members thought it would be a good idea.
I've got no further questions, I appreciate you being here late tonight.
Okay, and you also have to be aware of the fact, of the qualifications of everybody on the Public Art Committee.
I'm well aware of it, yeah.
And, and including our alternate, Robert Stackhouse, who makes just about everybody else that you mentioned pale in comparison, except Elizabeth Indiana's, of course. But, I mean, he hangs in museums, and he's one of our alternates.
You, we put him on the board, we know.
Mm-hmm. Yes, anything else, anyone?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to our next meeting.
Two weeks.
Yeah. Do we have any other, any other public comments on this item? Yes, ma'am, please come forward. Thank you.
D. O'Brien, 2056 North Point Alexis Drive, Tarpon Springs. I seem to be at cross purposes with this letter here, but forgive me. In a letter to the Florida State Division of Cultural Affairs, on behalf of the Tarpon Springs Performing Arts and Cultural Center, I wrote, quote, "My husband Graham Jones and I moved to Tarpon Springs because we value the community spirit that thrives here, and because we appreciate the wealth of programs that we can see, enjoy, and learn from so close to home. Brief background, after a 39-year career in teaching English and founding Directing Costuming, the semi-royal Shakespeare Company, which was the longest continuously running American Shakespeare theater, for teenagers, I retired to Florida. In Tarpon, I was introduced to Kathleen Monahan. For Kathy, and then for Diane Wood, I directed five Shakespeare productions, two at the Heritage Museum, and three here at PAC. My husband Graham directed three sold-out seasons of Bayou Radio Theater, excuse me, at the Cultural Center. In addition, I have reenacted the life of Dr. Mary James Safford since 2015, an opportunity for which I am enormously grateful to Diane Wood. I have donated money and time to programs here, because I believe in those in charge. Diversity, respect, dedication, and love are all part of the process of creating art of any kind, and that process is part of what makes us human. And so it pains me to see and hear and read about so much dissension in Tarpon Springs, which I have come to love, the latest being item 14 on tonight's agenda, the Public Art Committee. I watch as many of the Public Art Committee meetings as I can. The committee is a diverse group of people who volunteer time, thought, hard work, and research to beautify our city with unique projects. I wonder how the committee members feel, with Joan Jennings as its chair, and I know people are here tonight, about the insinuation that things are not moving forward, or are being axed. The word "public," as in Public Arts Committee, means of, or concerning the people as a whole. The phrase, I repeat, is "Public Art Committee," not a private art committee or personal fiefdom. Item 4, Section A, and Paragraph 288, in Article 17 of the Tarpon Springs Court of Ordinances, the Public Art Program, states, quote, "Art, artwork, or works of art means tangible creations by artists exhibiting the highest quality of skill and aesthetic principles." I will repeat, "the highest quality of skill and aesthetic principles." I will skip most of the next paragraph. Let the Public Art Committee do what they do best, find new and exciting works of art, hopefully utilizing the talents of local artists. We have wonderful artists working and living here in our community, and there are many more than the ones I mention here tonight. The works of Christopher Still, Elizabeth Indiana's, with whom my husband and I have worked to produce performance art, and the work of the Micket Stackhouse Studios, with whom we recently collaborated. Do, as Shakespeare- Do, as Shakespeare says, "Hold a mirror up to nature." Art should be a form of truth, not merely cartoon colors on a wall. Thank you for waiting to hear my letter.
Thank you.
Panayotis Kulyas, 595 Peninsula Avenue. We've seen throughout the course of months of suggestions by Mr. Carr on public arts around town that's just overriding the Public Arts Committee. Hey, I have a strong opinion on some arts that I feel around town, but we can't just go around creating colorful murals everywhere. You brought this one artist where it looks like the same mural on the side of Kumar. Well, are we gonna have that somewhere else in town? I mean, I'm 34 years old and I'm telling you, I do not want to see Tarpon with murals over all these historic walls inside the CRA districts and other parts in town to make your version of a hipster Tarpon Springs. Tarpon Springs can still be modern, still can attract young families, young people, without creating this, you know, wall art everywhere. As far as big business, you know, you give too many suggestions on your personal opinion on Tarpon art, and that's not necessarily what the people think. And a couple bronze statues, I mean, you have the pictures of the ladies with their, you know, with the angel wings out, like the one I see in Nashville, Tennessee. I mean, it's gotta be creative, that's not Tarpon Springs, that's just some generic art you can put anywhere. And the one suggestion I will give, commend you on, Jacob, was this brown statue or bronze statue that you thought about in, somewhere in the sponge docks where the old man is trimming the sponge and it's looking good. I agree with something like that, you know. Do I necessarily agree with the Niyad sitting on the end of the corner? Not so much, I think that stuff could be moved over by the kids' splash park, you know, and be right there, kids playing with the water, it relates together. So let's take our time coming with these decisions. They are, obviously, this Public Arts Committee is doing their due diligence, they're not trying to rush art that doesn't make sense for the town, they're not just spending money, you know, crazy just to spend the funds and ask for more, so. And one more thing, as we do get more bronze statues in town, I would ask, just me personally, we don't just buy statues that were made two, three, four years prior to what they were made. We try to create with these artists over a longer period of time where these statues can be created to form the history of Tarpon Springs. Now, one suggestion I have down the road, I don't care if it goes through or not, just coming up with pioneers of the sponging industry and having them all together and some type of statue over there by the sponge docks, I think that's important. But let's not veer away of who we are, we're Tarpon Springs, we're not Dunedin, we're not Sarasota, and we can bring all this art in, but we still have to have solid businesses around that art to make it inspiring, so just let the Public Arts Committee do what they have to do, trust in them. I know you have a passion for it all, but there are checks and balances that need to take place in order for us to have a solid foundation on art in the future.
Hope I'm the last. Mike Eisner, 1515 Riverside Drive. Earlier, we spoke about Jackie Turner not being able to be here, so I have her statement, if it's okay if I read it, it's not my comment, it's hers. So. Her comment, which is public, says, "After reviewing Commissioner Carr's report, I feel we have a disconnect between what is art and what is decor. True art takes time, money, planning, collaboration, compromise, study, contemplation, and commitment. This is why we have a Public Arts Committee. They do their homework to ensure our town invests in resources wisely to tell our story through art. Tarpon Springs has a rich and unique history and culture and it is, and if done right, that can be celebrated and communicated with a thoughtful Public Arts Program. When we make purchases for our fire department, the experts conduct extensive research to identify the most appropriate equipment to meet our very specific and unique needs. We don't just open up a book and pick a red truck out of a catalog because we can get it quickly and cheaply. Our city deserves better, so we take the time and spend the money to do better. Why can't we give public art the same level of consideration? People don't come to Tarpon to eat at a fast-food restaurant, so why do we want a display ready-made decor on our public spaces? It's colorful and fun and easily accessible, just like the fast-food restaurants. How are we telling our story through art if we're using the same images as other towns across the state? We're not sending our guests to a fast-food restaurant to experience the real Tarpon Springs, so why are we settling for catalog art? How is an artist in Ohio capturing the unique culture and spirit of our city? Are limiting, and are limiting our ideas to images of snook, redfish, and trout? Species come up and down the Gulf Coast, from Texas to the Keys, really nice. Do we want our public spaces to look like a Yeti tumbler? Do I want one of his tumblers on my boat? Sure. Do I want it representing the unique culture of my city? Definitely not. Where honored Christopher Still calls Tarpon Springs his home, internationally acclaimed artist Robert Stackhouse serves on a Public Arts Committee, albeit only as an alternate for reasons beyond my realm of comprehension, given his knowledge and his achievements. If Avon Health could invest the time and resources to work with Christopher Still for his mural in the hospital lobby, surely the city could take the appropriate time to work with other local artists to commission space and message appropriate pieces to help tell our story and create a lasting legacy for generations to come. Let's be a leader in public art, and let's not cheapen our city's reputation by ordering decor from a catalog and calling it art. We're better than this, signed Jackie Turner." And I thought it was an excellent writing, so thank you for listening.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on this item? Here none? Commission comments? Vice Mayor? Anything else?
I don't have any other comments, no.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to thank the Public Art Committee members that are here tonight. I appreciate everybody that volunteers their time for our city, it's never easy. I'm really excited to hear about getting the high school involved at Sunset Beach, I think that's gonna be an awesome project. Again, I just, I appreciate everything you guys do. I definitely don't think it should be adversarial when the committees and the Commission disagree. It happens all the time with site plans, short-term rentals, our quasi-judicial hearings. Every member on this board has disagreed with a committee vote at some point or another, just within the past couple of months. But again, I don't think it's unusual, I don't think it's unhealthy. I'm happy that we're all trying to make Tarpon Springs a better place and, you know, art's a matter of perspective, making Tarpon Springs a better place is a matter of perspective, so, again, I'm thankful for all the volunteers and all our board members and the ideas that they contribute to.
Thank you. Commissioner Vaticaris in the comments?
As always, I, I'm always extremely appreciative of the Public Art Committee. I watch their meetings, I know what's been approved, what's not been approved. Mrs. Jennings is always very communicative, explains everything. Mr. Neils is here, Ms. Robinson is here, Ms. Jennings is here, and I very much appreciate them being here this late hour, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you, actually, I want to thank every member in the committee, and I'm looking forward to the presentation that you're gonna have for us next, next meeting.
I guess it was a spoiler alert, though.
I know it, you know, but, but you memorized everything, you did good, thank you. Well, that concludes the, I guess we don't need a motion for that, or anything, so that concludes the regularization agenda, and we have five minutes to go to Staff Comments and the Board Comments. Major Trill, thank you for being here tonight. Any comments?
Thank you for having me.
City Attorney?
Nothing.
No comments, that?
Happy to be here.
Again, thank you for being here, too.
My pleasure.
Mr. Lacouris?
Just for a note, there should be out in the lobby, and you've each got on your desk the updated project summary as of today. If you remember these, this was created a while ago for the public and the Commission to see the projects and, and what the status are. You asked about it before, and Mayor, you talked about it. It's out there. Anybody in the audience on the way out, pick it up. We put, we've been advertising it on Facebook because a lot of the misinformation that people have on Facebook, if they take the time to look at this project list and see where they are, we wouldn't have those misconceptions on there. It's real easy to do, so we'll continue publicizing that. We also created a document that's on Facebook today of the projects and accomplishments, and I want to emphasize, these are not just mine and staff's, this is this board and Commissioners' accomplishments of what we've got done from January to May. So a copy of that's on there, it went out on Facebook today for the public to see, and we're trying to get as much facts. We hear a lot of negative news here, and there's a lot of positive going on in this city, and there's a lot of positive this board of Commissioners are doing, and if people will take the time to read it, I think they'll, they'll see that and consider it also when they're making comments about this, so. Those are out there, we'll keep getting it out there to the public, and we'll keep updating those lists and having it as you asked.
We only have three minutes left. Do we have a motion to extend for 10 minutes? If not, we call it a night.
Do we have three minutes, can we get through it in three minutes, or you think we need a motion?
I don't think so.
All right, motion to extend for five minutes.
Five minutes? 11:35?
You need a second?
Yes. Vroko, please.
Commissioner Vaticaris?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor, who's this?
Yes. Ms. Jacobs, any comments?
I have no comments, thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Carr?
No comments.
Commissioner Donovan?
No comments, Mayor.
Commissioner Vaticaris?
I was gonna thank the Little League for the inviting us to the closing ceremony. I think it was a great time to get at least the four of us together out there and.
Lot of fun, isn't it?
Pardon me?
It was a lot of fun.
It was a lot of fun, watched the youngsters and the children, both young men and young ladies. It was a beautiful day, and I very much appreciate the entire coaching staff and also their Board of Directors for putting this on, thank you.
Did, Mayor, did you make it in the dunk tank at all?
No.
No?
No. They didn't ask me, sorry, go on then. Thank you. I would like to extend my condolences to Salivares's family for the passion of Andreas Salivares, he was a big contributor to our community, may his memory be eternal. I also like to take this opportunity to thank Vice Mayor Carr for doing a good job filling in for me while, and conducting the meeting in May 11th while I was away, and appreciated for running the business when I was gone. When I was there, I had the opportunity to meet with government officials in Greece. We discussed the tweeting ceremonies for our sister cities and looking forward to proceed. It looks like it's gonna be in September, this is what they really want. Right now, they have, you know, the tourist season, so it's gonna be very difficult, so we'll wait till September to do that. Hopefully, we'll do it after the budget approval.
Well, we have the annual meeting then, the Sister Cities Annual Meeting, like we did two years ago.
Well, the annual meeting is, we usually have it right after the first of the year, but we're gonna have a meetings there. We missed the last one, you know?
Yeah, we didn't do the last one.
We missed that one. Also, if you, the public, if please join us on Memorial Day, November 31st, I mean, May 31st, at Craig Park, to honor and to remember our heroes for their sacrifice for serving our country. That ceremony is gonna take place 11 a.m., right after the ceremony, there's gonna be a barbecue provided by the Elks Club. And I'd like to congratulate the class of 2021. We are very proud of them, and I'm also very proud because my granddaughter's graduating too, so congratulations to her. This is what I. Well, that concludes the regularization meeting, and it's adjourned at 11:30 p.m. Didn't need to extend the time, huh?